All right, go for it.
Thank you.
Good call. It's going up, looking good.
Yeah.
Fifty-five attendees.
Very good. Well, if all the board members are here, I have no idea where they are on my screen. David Mandlecurry, he'll get recognized all the time. You'll be the only one on call lines, only one I see.
There you go. I just had my big raised hand. I feel like one of those fan hands to hold up to ask questions.
Trustee Norris and trustee Goodman are here as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Nunes. I recognize your voice. Okay, here we are. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Let's see. Vice Chancellor Mitch Bailey, if you'll do a roll call, please.
President Schwartz.
I'm here.
Vice President Nearest.
Here.
Trustee Goodman.
Here.
Trustee Holliver. Trustee Mandlecurry.
Here.
Student trustee Chanet. And also in attendance are Chancellor Claire, Piñata College President Moore, Styling College President Marino, College of San Mateo interim president Lopez, Chief Financial Officer Slater, and District Academic Senate President Wallace.
Very good, thank you. I know that trustee Holliver will be joining us. He may be having trouble connecting. So we have our magic flag. Vice Chancellor Bailey. If you'll all, there it is. All of you who want to participate, if you know, let's get rid of all that other stuff in there. Page display, Mary. There it goes. On the count of three, one, two, three, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Discussion of the Order of the Agenda. Staff has requested that Agenda Item 20-95C, a discussion of implementation of Title IX rules and new regulations, be moved as the first item to follow statements from the public on non-Agenda items. The board members agree to that? One, two, three. Okay, thank you. We will do that. Are there any other edits or changing on agenda from the board members? Hearing none?
I would just like to, before we get there and then I forget, I just wanted to see if we could pull 20-9-3A-E2.
20-9, I'm sorry, what?
Personnel item, but item number two. If we could just pull that, just in case I forget before we get down there, that's all.
Under personnel?
Yes.
I don't know why I don't have, oh, new business. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving forward, let's see. There is no reportable actions to report. Statements from the public on non-Agenda items. I see a hand raised. That is the procedure. You are allowed three minutes. Let's do no more than 20 minutes, hopefully. And our first, our first, we have two people from the public who would like to speak. Jennifer Carson.
Hi there.
Hello.
How are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Excellent, thank you. So my name is Jenna Carson. I wear many hats. Tonight, I'm speaking as a parent of a student athlete in the district and as an advocate for the hundreds of student athletes and their families who do not have the time, patience, or technology to attend board meetings. As you all know, the sports season for high school and college sports in California has been pushed to a December-January start. I'm speaking as a non-Agenda item because I'm just pretty shocked that it's never been agendized that I can find. And I'm anxious to hear about the preparations that must be underway to ensure a successful launch. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I have watched many, many hours of board meetings and reviewed tons of documents in search of answers at the local, state, and national level. So from, as far as I can tell, it will take three things for us to return, and I have no evidence of progress on any of them. Number one is athletic preparation. My daughter is in youth sports in San Mateo, and she is in full training sessions in groups and with equipment, while my college athlete has none. My high school son has been training all summer now, and still now in the fall with his team, while my college athlete is not. College athletics, athletics is for the elite, and many students choose our schools because our teams are elite. But if they are not even allowed on campus to train, we will risk their emotional and physical health when we reopen. Number two, we need academic preparation. If the students don't make the grade, then they will no longer be eligible to be athletes. My son has a laptop and a quiet space at home, but I work in East Palo Alto, and we send many, many athletes from Menlo Atherton to this district schools. And I'll tell you right now that those kids are not okay. They are crowded with their siblings and their cousins. They are left to babysit and care for their families at home. Oh, and by the way, EPA doesn't even have cell towers for the hotspots to work. They need the space of our beautiful, open, glorious campuses. They need to feel like they're in college. They need to have study groups, the tutors, and the emotional support of our campuses. If we deny them access to our college campuses, it is denying them an education. And third, we need facility and protocol preparation. So my niece actually was fortunate to play softball for the amazing CSM team, and even without a spring season, she earned a college scholarship. She never got to access her locker again. Five months later, she left to go play college softball without her glove. It's still locked in the CSM locker room. We must do better. There are updated relevant documents from the NC2A and the State of California outlining the expectations of the leadership in order to return to play. The guidance is there, the documents are there. I spent hours reading through them. The question is, where are we? As a parent of a student and the parent of an athlete, the parent of a proud community member, we have no idea if planning is happening. Are we moving forward? Are we going to be ready when the governing body for community college sports says, "Let's go"? I don't understand how the board and community are not provided regular updates during this time of crisis, and I worry that you don't understand that the future of my son and his teammates rests in your hands. We must open our campuses, even if that means classes remain online. We must use these amazing spaces to support our students. We must do better. We must communicate with all the stakeholders and make sure that everyone understands that there is hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Weidman.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, and I can see you, yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Schwartz, board members, staff, faculty, and community members. CSEA is happy to report that CSEA and the district negotiating team have reached a tentative agreement on both the COVID-19 MOU and the closure due to unhealthy air due to the Northern California fires MOU. We, we also continue to meet with our, and work with the district negotiation team on our successor contract, and our next meeting is scheduled for this coming Friday. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we will move into our study session since we have moved up the Agenda Item 20-95C, Discussion of Implementation of Title IX Rule and New Regulations. Chancellor Claire will introduce the study session topic and be followed by a presentation from Monisha Sims, District Director of Director of Policy Training and Compliance, and Melissa Gallegos, an attorney with Atkins, Allen, Anderson, Loyah, Rond, and Romo. Chancellor Claire.
Thank you so much, President Schwartz, and I know that this has been a topic that the board has been interested in for, for quite some time. I think we first started discussing this issue and the changes in Title IX and the importance that we understand the changes in Title IX back at our board retreat, and therefore, we set this as a study session. Of course, COVID-19 happened, and we, we got very busy on, on other things, but it's nice to be able to come back to this. We did, if you recall, we did a very quick presentation. Moanisha did a kind of a teaser presentation earlier this summer, and now we're prepared to go back and, and provide the full presentation. We are so fortunate to have Moanisha in her position at, in our district. She's extraordinarily knowledgeable, and like so many of our folks, she's, she's doing more than she signed up for, and I appreciate Moanisha's work on this and so many other things. And then also to have Melissa Gallegos with AALRR. I've actually heard Melissa speak at a couple conferences. She, she knows this so well. So with this, I'd like to turn it over to Moanisha, and, and I believe that like a study session, there'll be time, there'll be time for questions and answers with the board. So at this point, take it away, Moanisha.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Claire, and hello to the Board of Directors, Presidents, our student trustee, community members, faculty, staff, and our students. Melissa has put together a very well-organized presentation. We'll both be here for questions. She is the kind of expert kind in this area, but we all are all learning and growing because the new regulations are so new. So thank you, Chancellor Claire, for all the positive words of affirmation in terms of the work we do here at the district. I'm very proud to do the work we do. So I will turn it over to Melissa. She will share her screen for a PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here with you all to go over these new and exciting changes to Title IX and the Title IX regulation. So I'm just queuing up my screen. I'm hoping that we are good to go. Let me get that going. All right. So my screen should be up. I kind of wanted to start our study session this evening with going over kind of what our goal is and what our expectation should be. So the purpose of tonight's study session is to not have an in-depth, in-the-weeds dive into these new Title IX regulations. As Moanisha can attest, that would require, you know, hours and days of our time. The new Title IX regulations and the comments that were provided by the Department of Education on how those Title IX investigations should be interpreted is about 3,000 pages long. So we're not going to go through that today. What we're going to do is kind of give a high-level overview of the most significant changes and how that's going to impact the district's kind of complaint process, investigation process, and what really that means to the San Mateo County Community College District. So to go through kind of our expectations in our agenda, we're going to briefly go over the effects of the new Title IX rules and spend a little bit more time going through the top 10 issues that these new Title IX regulations are, are bringing up for our higher education institutions like the San Mateo County Community College District. And we're going to wrap up with a kind of to-do list, and Moanisha is going to provide kind of an update about where the district is in that to-do list, what we have to kind of work towards, and kind of the status update of where we're at. To kick us off, the, in looking at these new Title IX regulations, what's most significant of them, of these new Title IX regulations, is that they have the full force and effective law. This is different from what we purpose, we previously were using to interpret Title IX, and those were largely administrative documents that were issued by the Federal Office for Civil Rights, which is an arm of the Department of Education. Those were largely dear colleague letters, handbook's rules, guide, rules and guidance that were issued by the department, and they did not have the full force and effective law. It was essentially, this is how the Office for Civil Rights is currently interpreting Title IX. And I say currently interpreting because that guidance couldn't be changed and rescinded depending on which administration is, is sitting in the White House. And so these new Title IX regulations are regulations, meaning they are laws. They are laws that the district has to follow. The district does have some flexibility in how it's going to implement these laws, but the laws themselves have to be followed. The overall intent of the changes of the new Title IX regulations were to strengthen protections for sexual misconduct and also to provide protections for folks facing accusations of sexual misconduct. So if you kind of boil it down, really what the intent of the changes were, were clarifying definitions, how and when Title IX should apply, and due process protections. The due process protections is really where we see the biggest changes coming in and how they're impacting our current complaint processes. Title IX itself is, and looks at conduct that's based on sex. So whenever we're talking about sexual harassment and sexual misconduct, that's when kind of our light bulbs about Title IX should be going off and whether, and when we start thinking about what our current process is and what, what we have to adhere to with regard to the new regulations. To make things a little bit more fun and exciting, because I don't want to use any sort of negative terms, is that Title IX and sexual harassment also requires the district to consider what the current law is in California. So what we have when we're dealing with Title IX issues is we're also going to have a layering of what our requirements are in California. So as a community college district in California, you also have the requirements of Title V. Title V is a, a set of California laws and regulations that govern complaint processing for community college districts here in California. I'm not going to go into any sort of depth about the, the Title V regulations and requirements for California community colleges, but just know that Title IX is working alongside and sometimes with a lot of other legal requirements that the district has to meet. So you're not only dealing with federal Title IX, you're dealing with California state law, education code, and your own board policies and administrative procedures. So you're going to see the process that ends up shaking out of your adherence to the Title IX requirements kind of have a layering effect to be able to meet all of those different statutory and policy procedural requirements that we have to meet. Title IX applies to educational institutions that receive financial funding from, from the federal government. That includes K-12 and post-secondary institutions like the community college district. There's some overlap in how these new regulations affect community college districts and K-12 school districts. But the most significant difference is that higher ed and institutions like the community college district now have a requirement of providing a live hearing. And we'll talk a little bit about what that live hearing looks like and where that requirement is coming from. So you're going to have this additional procedural step that a lot of community college districts didn't already have. Throughout our time this evening, I'm going to kind of stop at the end of every slide as we go through these top 10 issues to allow an opportunity for questions or clarifying comments so that I can, you know, serve the purpose for, for us being here together today as a study session. This is an opportunity to learn and to ask questions, so, so please don't be shy. When we're thinking about the top 10 issues of these new Title IX regulations, the, the most significant change is a change from, and then one investigator model, meaning you used to have one investigator who would jump in, investigate the allegations, put together an investigation report. That investigation report including, included factual findings. So, you know, what happened based on the evidence that was collected and provided, and then also a finding about the policies and procedures that were violated based on those factual findings. The new Title IX regulations are moving away and moving educational institutions away from that one investigator model and instead adopting a team approach. So now you are looking at having a Title IX team with five different roles that are kind of laid out in the regulations, and we'll go through what those five roles are and who's responsible for what. Again, we're not going to do a deep dive into each one of those roles, but we will talk about and provide kind of a summary of what, what those roles are responsible for. The second most significant change is actually a change to the definition of sexual harassment. So these new regulations are changing the definitions of sexual harassment, and this definition under Title IX is going to be different from what you see in California under California law and possibly also different from what you currently have in your board policies and administrative procedures. So what does that mean? That means that districts are having to take a step back and figure out, well, do we have two policies? Do we have one policy to adopt one standard? How are we going to work with these different definitions? When really, you're dealing with one complaint and one allegation that might come out as, yes, sexual harassment under Title IX, but maybe not sexual harassment under your board policies and administrative procedures, or vice versa. So we're really having to do kind of an analysis of trying to figure out what's going to be the best approach for your institution so that you are not only responding to complaints, not showing deliberately, not being deliberately indifferent, which is the standard that's used by the Office for Civil Rights to determine, you know, whether a district is being responsive and meeting its Title IX requirements, but also trying to make sure that you are, you know, running an efficient institution and that parties are being provided the due process and rights that they should be afforded under federal and state law. Supportive measures. We'll talk about the requirement for supportive measures and what that looks like, how that's changed from what we were previously doing under Title IX. Briefly talk on emergent, talk about emergency removal, the informal resolution process, investigations, hearings, that's that live hearing requirement that we have now under these new Title IX regulations that we didn't previously have, findings, reports, appeals, and ultimately retaliation. So when we are looking at the new kind of team approach that's contemplated under these new Title IX regulations, we are looking at essentially five positions that have been spelled out for us. One is your Title IX coordinator. Many institutions or all institutions really are required to have a Title IX coordinator, and your Title IX coordinator, their current duties might shift a little bit in order to, you know, make room for these additional players that we're going to have joining us on these Title IX issues that come up. But your Title IX coordinator is essentially your air traffic controller. They are the person that's going to be responsible for the compliance of the institution with these new Title IX regulations. They're going to be the gatekeeper in terms of receiving complaints and making a determination whether a complaint should or should not be processed under Title IX. They're going to implement the remedies that are ultimately decided on by your decision-maker. And they're really there to ensure that the institution is in compliance with all the requirements of Title IX. The second role that's been spelled out by the regulations is the role of an investigator. This investigator is going to be responsible for, you know, conducting witness interviews, conducting interviews of the complainants, gathering, you know, documentary evidence or whatever evidence might come up, and issuing a report of findings to the parties and to the decision-maker. This decision-maker, which is our third role that we have up here on the screen, this is probably the biggest change that districts are having to deal with. Before we had that one investigator model, your investigator was essentially your decision-maker. It's the person who decided whether a policy did or did not get violated, whether a rule or a law did or did not get violated based on the evidence that was collected. Title IX says, "No more." Your Title IX coordinator and your investigator cannot be your decision-maker. Your decision-maker is the person that's ultimately going to be responsible for reviewing all of the evidence, for conducting the live hearing, and for making a finding about whether policies were or were not violated, and if they were violated, what type of discipline, if any, should be provided, and what type of supportive measures or kind of restitution, for lack of a better word, right now, should be provided to your complainant. The hearing officer or decision-maker is the person who's going to be responsible for running a live hearing. This live hearing component, again, is, is one of the things that's causing higher educational institutions like community colleges to take a step back and figure out, how is this going to work? So previously, when you were dealing with sexual harassment complaints or Title IX complaints, this was largely a paper process, if you thought, if you think about it. You conducted your investigations, you issued an investigation report, you issued an administrative determination. There was an appeal process, and that was pretty much it. Now, you're going to have a live hearing where the parties have an ability to cross-examine one another. And this isn't the ability to cross-examine one another directly. Districts do have to provide an advisor of choice to the parties for this live hearing, so this advisor of choice can be anyone. They just have to be unbiased, no conflicts, and be trained to serve in that position. So you will also have a requirement to record or provide some sort of transcript for this live hearing. For anyone that's ever been involved in, for example, employee discipline matters, that's typically what you see. You see a court reporter, you see the parties. You have a hearing officer who makes calls about whether questions are relevant, what evidence comes in and out. This is essentially the same thing that your decision-maker is going to do. So we're in kind of identifying who's going to be a hearing officer or a decision-maker at the district. We are anticipating, you know, many districts having to not only identify these individuals, but provide further training so that these decision-makers are ready to serve in those roles and make those calls that they're going to have to call in terms of deciding whether questions are relevant, whether questions are going to be allowed or not. Because that's one of the additional Title IX requirements for our decision-makers is they need to make rulings on relevancy and explain why things are or are not going to be allowed. So that needs to be fleshed out in writing, and that's in order to be compliant with these new Title IX regulations. The next position that we have is the appeal decision-maker. So this is largely going to be, and we recommend that it be a paper process. So at this point in the process, the parties have had an opportunity to participate in an investigation. They've had an opportunity to review all the evidence. They've had an opportunity to review all the evidence, the reports, provide witnesses with the decision maker, cross-examine the other party, the decision maker issued their decision, their written decision, and now they're appealing that decision. So the appeal body, which in most districts is contemplated in being the Board of Trustees, they will make a determination on whether the appeal should move forward or not. If there's grounds for the appeal, the administrative regulations as of now have kind of three reasons why a decision can be appealed. The regulations allow districts to add more reasons. We don't recommend that districts do that, but that is something that's available to districts if they wanted to. And we'll talk a little bit about what that appeal process looks like. The fifth person that's on the team is the informal process facilitator. And so this is perhaps someone who's going to be conducting mediation or some form of informal resolution with the parties. And there's also updates with regard to informal resolution and what that looks like as a result of these new Title IX changes in the regulation. So we'll talk a little bit about that. In discussing-
A question before you move on?
Yes, please.
Maybe this is premature and we'll get to this in a workflow or something discussion later, but you touched on the board's role as basically, you know, hearing appeals and essentially being the appellate court, as it were, in this process. Because of that, does the board need to be careful about involvement earlier on? Because, for example, in the past, you know, there have been times where we have gotten briefed on an incident or an investigation that's being set up. And I think we felt like, well, maybe we shouldn't be getting this information because if this is going to come back to us on an appeal, we really shouldn't be exposed to this information at the early stage of an investigation or of a complaint.
Yes, absolutely, Trustee Mandelker. And that's really best practices for boards in general. When you're dealing with complaints, whether it be Title IX complaints, harassment, discrimination, employee discipline, the board has a right and should know kind of general facts about what's going on, right? But they shouldn't be conducting the investigation. Remember, you know, Title IX is telling us investigators can't be decision makers. So investigators can also be appeal officers. So really, when the board comes in, it's okay for them to generally know the lay of the land, but they're not conducting the investigation, asking witnesses, collecting evidence. They, you know, you said it yourself, they're kind of serving as an appellate court. So you're just really reviewing the documents, making sure that the district adhered with its procedural requirements that, you know, one of those three reasons for appeal aren't being met. So the regulations do kind of spell out the very limited role of appeal officers.
So maybe you could even be more specific then, because this is, I think, where, you know, some of our previous conversations have focused is what level of detail is appropriate or inappropriate for us as the board to receive before it gets to the point of being an appeal? Just when it's in the initial stages of an investigation or of a complaint.
Sure. In terms of appropriate information, that typically includes maybe a general summary of the allegations, timelines that you're dealing with. You're not, depending on the board, you might tell them who's involved, for example, complainant respondent. I typically, in my practice, limit the amount of information really to protect the board. So I have a complainant employee and a respondent student. So not necessarily names, but just generally speaking, who's involved.
So you don't identify by name, for example, would be a best practice?
Right. And, you know, sometimes you can avoid that with the advent of social media, Twitter, all the different areas of information or different information locations. Sometimes we can avoid learning about complaints and who's involved.
And then a follow-up question to that, because sometimes the complaint itself comes directly to the board, especially if it's coming from someone, you know, outside of the immediate institution in the community or something. They will send us the information, whatever, and obviously, you know, we will pass that through the process. But, you know, sometimes that gives us maybe more information than we really want to know. So any advice or suggestions or best practices on dealing with that part of it?
I think best practices is you receive that complaint and you do, you know, what you're supposed to do. You forward it on to your Title IX coordinator or whoever is responsible for processing those complaints. What you don't do is, you know, email back and start conducting your own investigation. That's the job of, you know, one of your administrators to do and to make sure that the right process is being followed.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I have a question. You are now basically following up with what the Trustee Mandelker indicated. I mean, just hearing about it, we would need to hear about certain things because things, as you've indicated, become public knowledge within a district, if it's something within a district. And so obviously, the board should at least have some knowledge of it because, you know, people will talk to us and we need to be advised. So I guess knowing about something or rather than judging it, trying to create an impression, making a determination, just looking at it objectively is probably the best way to do it and not to follow up on any kind of proactive insight into it, is what you're saying. Relative to the hearing officers, are these like administrative law judges that are hired? I mean, if they're going to be making decisions and ruling on objections and cross-examination, they would need to have a legal background, so that makes me think that they need to be lawyers. So are these people within our district that are going to be called upon to take on that responsibility? Or are we going to have to bring in outside judges to do this? Because it sounds like full evidentiary hearings here.
Yes. So that is definitely a question that has come up. And the way that the Department of Education has responded to that inquiry has been your Title IX complaint officer has to be a district employee. Your investigators and your hearing officers can be outside third parties or they can be internal district employees as long as they have been trained to meet the responsibilities of those positions. And so ultimately, that will be more or less a workflow decision that the district will have to make. Do we have the resources to train these investigators? Are these investigators only going to be investigating or are they going to have other duties? If they have other duties, are they really going to have the time to meet all the requirements of conducting an efficient and proper investigation? And that's going to meet the timelines that are required under your board policies and administrative procedures and under Title IX and state law and, you know, all the different layers and pieces of the puzzle that we're working with here. And you're going to have to ask yourself those same questions for your decision makers. Do we want to train decision makers? Are these going to be duties that are additional to what they're already doing? Or are we going to kind of look to outside parties to fill those roles?
Well, I'm not as concerned about the investigators. I'm more concerned about hearing officers because it sounds to me, and I'm not sure whether you meant it or not, but if the rules of evidence apply to testimony that's offered, a layperson is not going to be able to make objections on issues of hearsay or other types of objections that someone that's legally trained would be able to do. And even lawyers aren't really trained to do that, it would be a judicial officer. And so then if there are flaws in the hearing process, then does that create a problem upon appeal? So, I mean, that could be a real problem if your hearing is not conducted properly because people aren't trained to do it properly. And then does that create an opening for appeals based on due process?
Yes. So the way that the Department of Education, the Office for Civil Rights kind of envisions dealing with these evidentiary issues is that districts, you know, higher ed or K-12 institutions do not have to comply with federal or state rules of evidence. Essentially, you're going to be creating your own policies and procedures. You're going to choose which standard of evidence is going to be applied and that's essentially the standard that you're going to be held to. So it's not a requirement that your hearing officer be legally trained or, you know, in ALJ, so an administrative law judge or some sort of other legal practitioner to be able to make those decisions. You just have to have your own policies and procedures and have your decision makers trained on what those policies and procedures are. And when they're making calls on the relevancy of questions, they need to be able to articulate, you know, why they're making those decisions. But they're not going to be held to any sort of judicial standard or legal standard.
Who would we anticipate would be presenting the cases before the hearing officer? As far as that goes, on behalf of the complainant and the person who the complaint is being raised against? Will they have their attorneys bringing them? Someone on behalf of the district will present the district's case? And then the person that is charged with these offenses will be represented by an attorney? Is that how we expect this will happen?
Your lawyer is showing. So the way that the process is contemplated working is it's not that the district is bringing a case. So this is different from how we deal with administrative cases in higher ed institutions, for example, employee discipline, right? When we deal with employee discipline, we typically have a hearing officer. The district is responsible for meeting the burden. And then you have your employee who has their representative, whether it's an attorney or a union representative that helps them put on their case, opening statements, presents evidence, witnesses, cross-examination. What this process will look like is you'll have your hearing officer who is going to receive and collect the evidence, the investigation reports, the questions that are going to be asked of the respondent and the complainant, so the cross-examination questions. And the complainant and the respondent are responsible for either for, when we're at the hearing stage, the district is responsible for providing the advisors to the parties. These advisors don't have to be legal representatives. So it can be someone that you've identified at the district, current employees, or if, for example, the complainant or respondent prefers to have an attorney as an advisor of choice or a union representative as an advisor of choice, they may do that. But the district doesn't have a responsibility to put on its case. That responsibility is really only limited to providing the advisor of choice and the advisor of choice is responsible for questioning witnesses and for questioning the other party.
Okay, I probably will have more questions about this because I think this is going to be a huge area of problems. Just because, I mean, when someone is being accused of something, the object is to, you know, defeat that allegation against them. And there's a, you know, I mean, I just want to be caught up in the situation where we go into appeals and then it becomes Superior Court and goes beyond that. Is this modeled after anything else? I mean, is anyone else doing exactly this so then you can say, well, it's working successfully elsewhere?
Yes. So luckily for California, I'm sure, you know, the university that was kind of at the center of this case doesn't feel quite lucky, but back in 2019, here in California, we did get an appellate decision that dealt specifically with due process and the hearing requirements for a higher ed institution. As a result of that, the findings that the Title IX hearing process was, did not provide adequate due process, the CSUs in the UCs started immediately working on crafting what a compliant process would look like. So luckily for community colleges in California and higher educate, other higher ed institutions here in California, we can look to the UC system and CSUs to kind of provide us examples of what this process can look like. And I say can because this process has to be tailored to fit each institution so that it's something that works with kind of your administrative structure, your student, how you process student misconduct, how you process employee misconduct.
Thank you.
No problem. Going back to kind of the significant changes of Title IX, we have the changes in how it's being defined under Title IX and how this is different from our current practice or the current requirements and definitions in California. The biggest change in these Title IX regulations with regard to the definitions is the fact that quid pro quo harassment only applies to the conduct of employees. So under California law, under many board policies and administrative procedures, quid pro quo harassment can occur between students or student on a third party. Under Title IX, quid pro quo harassment can only occur if it's based on the misconduct of an employee. And so here we have the definition of quid pro quo harassment. I'm not going to read it to you, but the most important thing to know is that this definition is really narrowing the scope of complaints that we will see come and be able to be processed under the new Title IX regulations. The second significant change in the definitions of sexual harassment is a change to hostile environment. So in California, many institutions and under the educational code, we have seen severe pervasive or objectively offensive. And that's the standard that's been used to find whether a hostile environment exists. Title IX is narrowing what is going to fall into that definition by changing the standard to so severe pervasive and objectively offensive. So it's that "and" standard. The Department of Ed has stated that they made this change so that the First Amendment rights of individuals are protected. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that means and how the changes were meant to protect First Amendment rights. But just know that we're looking at a narrowing of the scope of what's going to be, fall into the definitions of Title IX. The third significant change to the definitions of sexual harassment under Title IX is the inclusion, the specific inclusion of sexual acts. And that includes sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, and stalking. And these definitions are taken from the Clery Act and Bawa, which you, as a higher educational institution, have already had the responsibility of complying with. Supportive measures are, this is kind of a new term that's been put into place by these new Title IX regulations. Previously, we referred to interim measures as steps that districts would take and put in place either when they receive a complaint or while an investigation is pending. The Department of Education, the Office for Civil Rights, has changed the term to supportive measures. And that's because they are acknowledging that these measures might actually survive the Title IX process, meaning they'll be put in place as soon as the complaint is received and maybe also pass resolution of the complaint. Or if no complaint is ever received, these supportive measures might still be put and left in place. So we are changing our terminology from interim measures to supportive measures. There is now a requirement and this requirement has to be evidenced by the district in documenting. So the district has to document that it's meeting this requirement to offer supportive measures to complainants, even if they choose not to file a formal complaint. So as soon as the district is made aware that a Title IX issue has arisen, it is going to offer supportive measures to the complainant. Another change with regard to supportive measures, in addition to when they're offered and the title that we're using, is that supportive measures cannot be burdensome or more unduly burdensome on one part- or more unduly burdensome on one party more than the other. What this means and kind of how this plays out practically is that in the past, if a complainant filed a complaint, and let's say the students, we're talking about a student on student complaint, and the students were in the same class, we would look at removing the respondent from that class. Maybe transferring sections, transferring lectures, lecture time slots. What the new Title IX regs say is you cannot do that. You have to try to avoid burdening one party more than the other. So this is where districts are going to have to really be creative on the types of supportive measures that they are offering. And I think, you know, in the times that we're in with distance education, you know, luckily for us is that we really have had to put our imaginations to work in trying to figure out how we can provide education without maybe students being in the same classroom. And so those tools that we have been cultivating for the past few months are going to serve you well in trying to identify how and when and what types of supportive measures you are going to be able to provide to both complainants and respondents. The supportive measures that you are going to be providing, it's going to be a case by case analysis. So you're not always going to be providing the same thing. It's going to depend on the parties that are involved, facts and circumstances. You know, are they in the same class? Are they on the same sports team? Do they have other extracurricular activities? Those are all different things that are going to influence what type of supportive measures are provided. And so down here, I just have some examples. So perhaps your supportive measures are going to include counseling, course-related adjustments, modifying schedules, no contact orders. Those are all options and examples that are provided here. Any questions? I did say I would kind of pause. I know I'm talking quickly right now. Not hearing any. A fourth update is an update to emergency removals. Essentially, districts are going to be limited on when they can remove a respondent from the educational institution. And that is going to be narrowed to and requires an individualized safety and risk assessment. So this is really focusing on physical threats. It's not going to be based on an emotional threat or psychological threat. It really has to be some sort of physical safety risks that is going to be considered in order to remove a student. And when I say remove, perhaps that means suspending a student, not allowing them on campus, removing them from the educational institution while the investigation is pending. So this is going to require an immediate threat assessment for health and safety. The students are going to have to be provided notice and also an opportunity to immediately appeal and challenge that decision to remove them from campus. As kind of a side note, you as an educational institution still have to be wary of modifying any sort of rights that students might have under the IDEA Section 504 or the ADA. So I'm still looking at those issues. It's kind of our recommendation that these emergency removal decisions be made by a bit team, not just one individual, but maybe a team who can consider these IDEA, ADA issues in addition to perhaps program issues so that it's a well-informed decision.
Do these type of situations rise to the, to criminal type things? Where people would have to get restraining orders or police would be involved? In which case then that would supersede what we'd have to do?
It can. And this especially pops up if you're, and you know, where I've dealt with it in community college districts is in cases of stalking or sexual misconduct, where the complainant not only has a right to file a complaint, you know, the matter arose out of the educational program or activity with the community college district, but they also have a right to file a criminal complaint. And I have seen cases where a restraining order is put in place and then the district now is trying, has to figure out how to balance the rights of the respondent and the complainant. Because of, you know, these new Title IX regs, they're really driving home, you know, the standard that you, that you should be kind of thinking about your respondent. And your respondent should be assumed to essentially be innocent until proven guilty. So you don't want to punish them by removing them from campus or taking them out of a specific course unless you've really put the time and effort to think about, you know, the reasons for that. And that's where we have that emergency removal process. Another significant change is the informal resolution process. Long gone are the days where we would try to informally resolve a complaint before we went down the road of investigation and the formal process. The new Title IX regs don't make informal resolution available until a formal complaint has actually been filed. And then once that, that formal complaint has been filed, then your Title IX coordinator speaks to your complainant and your respondent, informs them of their right to participate in informal resolution. If they choose to voluntarily participate in informal resolution, they have to have a signed written consent to participate in that informal resolution. And they can choose to stop that process at any moment and instead jump back into that formal investigation and Title IX process. The informal resolution process is not going to be available for complaints of, between employees and students. And that is due to the Department of Education's acknowledgement of an imbalance of power. And kind of their rationale is that if you have informal resolution between employees and students, students might not feel comfortable actually wanting to move forward with the formal complaint process or even bringing complaints forward. So informal resolution is not going to be available for complaints between students and employees, employees versus students.
So question?
Yes.
So this sounds like one of the more significant, if not most significant, changes in the new Title IX regulations. And would you, would you agree with that? And in terms of sort of, you know, maybe best practices or practices that you see in other community college districts? I know this is something in the past that, you know, we have had administrators who have tried to use the informal resolution process extensively. And it sounds like now that is going to be a much more limited option and we should frankly be very cautious about how that's applied.
Yes, I would agree that it's definitely going to be a much more limited practice, that it should be applied kind of with, you know, supervision and care. Again, it's a case by case determination. The reason for this change, and I do agree with the Department of Ed, is that what they saw is that the informal resolution process was kind of being used as, and led to the passing of the trash. And I'm using quotes because those are the words used by the Department of Ed. In that instead of going through the complaint process and allowing complainants to exercise their rights, what they saw was that educational institutions were instead trying to force this informal resolution process to avoid an investigation, a more kind of cumbersome investigation process, which then led to kind of the shuffling around of problem individuals instead of actually dealing with them and going down the more formal investigation and discipline process.
Do you foresee any problem though with, because, you know, you actually are asking people to essentially step up to making a formal complaint before, I mean, can be done? Is that going to discourage people from coming forward though with issues? Because that there is not a less formal process available now than going through the formal complaint process? And how would you suggest balancing that?
Sure. So this is kind of one of the intricacies of this new Title IX regulation or this new Title IX complaint processes. In order for you to move down the road of a formal Title IX complaint, you have to meet the requirements of what that formal Title IX complaint is. So that means it has to be written, it has to be signed, and it has to meet the specific definitions of sexual harassment that have been defined by the new regulations. It has to occur within the program or activity of the district, and it has to occur within the United States. If those requirements aren't met, then you are not going to be able to proceed down your formal Title IX complaint process. Instead, what you do is move down another complaint process that you have identified. And so maybe that's a similar or the same because you choose to have just one process for all complaints or you have an alternative process that you use for non-Title IX complaints. And so even if, you know, kind of answering your question about, well, what if complainants don't want to file a complaint? You can either choose to move forward under one of your non-Title IX complaint process or even under Title IX, your Title IX coordinator can make the decision to still move forward with a complaint and investigation. Those are going to be very narrow circumstances when your Title IX coordinator makes that decision. Typically, it's because maybe they know or have information about past acts of the respondent or there's a serious concern for physical health and safety that that Title IX coordinator is going to base that decision on moving forward with, with the Title IX complaint process.
And you just mentioned something interesting, which I wonder if that's also a new change in the regulations, which is the, the subject of the complaint has to have taken place within the United States?
Yes. And so that is, and I was planning on bringing that up, but since, in a little bit, when we talk about when complaints can or cannot be dismissed. And so I think maybe while I have that side up, I will, you know, respond to that point if that's okay with you.
Sure, particularly in the context of we have overseas studies programs and things like that. So that would, that's the thought I have. So if you can discuss that in the future, that would be great.
Of course. And so for now, kind of picking up, and I'm going to put a, you know, a pin in that because we will discuss it. But kind of moving on with, with the workflow that we have right now, investigations are also being updated under these new Title IX regulations. Mainly that your investigator is not your decision maker or your appeal officer. In some circumstances, your Title IX coordinator can serve as your investigator. There has to be written notice that's going to be provided to the parties so that they have a fair opportunity to participate in the investigation process. So, you know, the process that you currently have, you already advise the parties of the complaints. Typically, that notice is given ahead of time so that the parties do have an opportunity to prepare to investigate, to prepare to participate in those investigatory interviews. So I don't necessarily see that being a big change for, for the process at the district. In the investigation process, essentially what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Whatever you allow for the complainant, you're going to have to allow for the respondent. And so that means allowing them an opportunity to provide evidence, to review all of the evidence, and also to provide written responses to, to the evidence and to the investigation report. A big update to this investigation process is that we have this new rule of no gag orders. So we cannot put restrictions on the individuals and say, you're not permitted to discuss this. So this is, and the Department of Ed, in its rationale, has articulated that this no gag order rule is because they want parties to be able to collect evidence to present in their defense or in putting on their case or in assisting the decision maker in making a decision. So that includes contacting witnesses. It also includes, you know, the ability to criticize how the district is responding to complaints. I mentioned that one of the driving forces behind the changes that the Department of Education has articulated is the protection of First Amendment rights. So that includes the ability to criticize the process. The Department of Ed says, hey, that's important for, for educational institutions to know too. You know, maybe the process is screwed up. How are they going to know unless people have an ability to voice their concerns and frustrations about it? So that's an update as well is that, that rule of no gag orders. And kind of going through the burden of proof, we have the preponderance of the evidence standard are clear and convincing. Ultimately, it's up to the district to decide which standard of proof is going to be applied in its Title IX cases. I do want to point out that the new Title IX regulations were put into effect August 14th of 2020. September 18th of 2020, the new Title V regulations regarding complaints at community colleges went into effect. So one is a federal sexual, and applies to sexual harassment. The Title V regulations is here in the state of California and applies to harassment and discrimination complaints, including sexual harassment. Under the Title V regulations, they articulate that the standard that's going to be used is the preponderance of the evidence. And currently in working with the district, I'm also aware that the preponderance of the evidence is what's already been adopted by the district in its various policies and procedures. So that's the burden of proof that's being applied there. Title IX itself does not have a lot of specific deadlines. So unlike Title V, which tells us complaints should be processed in 90 days, Title IX tells us that complaints should be processed within a reasonable amount of time. The way that the district has mostly dealt with that is still complying with Title V and saying, we're processing all our complaints within that 90 day timeline. What the new Title IX regs do have with regard to timelines is a requirement that the parties be provided 10 days to review and respond to the evidence and investigation report that's going to be prepared by your investigator. And then, and this is before the report is finalized. After the report is finalized, they have to be provided an opportunity to review and respond to that final investigation report 10 days before the decision maker process gets underway. So before a hearing, for example. So this is one of the only kind of time requirements that these new Title IX regs are going to be imposing on, on our educational institution. I've talked about, about the presumption of innocence already. Again, that's acknowledging the kind of observation by the Department of Education or its rationale that respondents were not being treated fairly. So now we have a requirement that, and a presumption that respondents be presumed to not be responsible for the alleged conduct. And so this is a point that goes to anyone who's going to be participating in your Title X. There's a requirement that they not have conflicts, that they be unbiased, and that they be impartial. And so that means you cannot have, cannot be operating under the premise that all complainants should be believed and their allegations are true. Or, you know, vice versa, that all complainants are liars and respondents should be the ones that are believed. No, it's, you know, both, you kind of take the evidence and go wherever it leads you. This, the dismissal requirement that I have up here is actually some decision that's going to be made by your Title IX coordinator in serving kind of their gatekeeper traffic control functions. The new Title IX regulations spell out when complaints have to be dismissed and when they may be dismissed. So with that mandatory dismissal, it's if a complaint doesn't meet the definition of sexual harassment, if it occurred outside of the program or activity of the community college district, or the conduct did not occur against a person in the US. Trustee Mandelcurran, as you had observed, this is an issue when we're thinking about our study abroad programs or even travel outside of the United States that maybe some of our students, you know, take part in. If this, this is a departure from previous administrations and how they were providing guidance on Title IX, which said, yes, you can process Title IX complaints and you should process Title IX complaints from allegations of conduct that occurred outside of the U.S. and study abroad programs. This new, this administration and the new regulations specifically apply jurisdictional requirement that the conduct occurred within the United States. So conduct in our travel abroad programs in different countries would have to be mandatorily dismissed under Title IX. But it doesn't mean that that conduct cannot be evaluated under our other board policies and administrative procedures, and maybe it still be found a violation of our student code of conduct. We also, these new regulations also deal with permissive dismissal. Permissive dismissal is available if the complainant decides to withdraw the complaint or if the one of, one of the parties, the respondent, is no longer enrolled or employed at the district, or there is some sort of circumstance that impedes the gathering of sufficient evidence. This is, again, permissive dismissal. We are kind of recommending against districts deciding to to dismiss too many complaints. And that's because although you might not have sufficient evidence, at least you show that you were not deliberately indifferent, that you did investigate the allegations, you just weren't able to make a finding. Or if a respondent is no longer employed or a student is no longer enrolled, we know that oftentimes our our students leave and then come back to us. So if you don't finish that process, you're not going to be able to pick back up or, you know, hold that student or that employee accountable if they ever do come back to the district.
Question, some of these, these changes are rather, you know, extensive and, you know, substantial. How does the timing impact this? If an incident occurred prior to August 14th, is it interpreted under the old rules or under the new rules?
Yes. So that was the hot question that we all wanted to know when when we found out that these rules were finally going to go into effect on August 14th. So these rules were in the making for over the past two years. In May, we found out that they were going to go into effect in in August. And most recently, probably, it's probably been over a month that the Office for Civil Rights, the Department of Education, issued a Q and A and specifically advised that this new Title IX process is only going to apply to conduct or allegations of of conduct that occurred after, on or after August 14th, 2020. Everything prior to that, you're going to follow whatever procedure was in place, whatever guidance was in place at the time. So it's very possible that you kind of start processing complaints of sexual harassment under Title IX under, you know, what used to be your old process and, you know, this new process. And so your investigations might be looking a little bit different for quite some time.
Thank you.
No problem. One of, I, I like to say, one of the significant changes, but as kind of our our time here goes on, I I realize that you're right, they're all pretty significant changes, and they're all pretty big changes that impact how we're processing Title IX complaints. The live hearing requirement for post-secondary institutions like your Community College District is a big change. Not many districts provided a live hearing for sexual harassment allegations or complaints. This live hearing allows for the cross-examination of the parties. It also provides that if the parties aren't comfortable being in the same room together, then we have the option of providing a virtual option. I think at this point, you know, six-plus months into the pandemic, we're all getting pretty comfortable with Zoom. I do have to admit, I sometimes still forget to unmute myself when I start talking. But, you know, this is a tool that we have at our disposal and something that you can consider using for this live hearing requirement. The parties just have to be able to simultaneously hear or or ask questions of the other parties. I I talked about the cross-examination process a little bit, so I won't spend too much time on their rape shield protections. I won't spend too much time about that. It's just the new regulations limit the amount of evidence of past sexual behavior that can be used during the hear process, the hearing process. And that's really restricted to to prove that someone else committed the conduct or kind of as an explanation of how consent was provided in the past. And this is, you know, how it was provided this time. But it's going to be very, very limited in terms of past sexual behavior and how that can come into your hearing process. We spent some time already talking a little bit about the decision maker and what that hearing process looks like. I already mentioned, it cannot be your Title IX coordinator or your investigator. They have to be trained. They have to understand the standard, that preponderance of the evidence standard that's going to be applied. And once that hearing process is wrapped up, they're going to be issuing a written decision. It's going to include essentially a summary of the entire process when notices went out, what the investigation process looked like, what that timeline was, include findings of facts, conclusions, rationale, proposed disciplinary sanctions and and remedies to the complainant, and also information on how to file an appeal. This is kind of similar to what you currently do with your administrative determinations and kind of the information that's included in there. So you'll just be adding a few additional components to some of the work and work product that that the district already does when it is responding to to complaints of harassment and discrimination. Any, any additional questions about, you know, what happens after the decision maker fills their role?
A question, are the hearings conducted under oath? So people that are offering testimony are are under oath and their penalty purge, you would apply?
No, so the Title IX regs, regulations do not require any sort of oath be taken. There's what, what is articulated by the new Title IX regulations is this notion that you can charge individuals with false statements, but it's going to be limited in that those charges for false statements can't be, oh, well, you claim that you were sexually harassed and the evidence proves otherwise. It has to be knowingly making a a false statement in bad faith. So that's the standard that you're going to use. You're not going to have any sort of oaths that has to be taken.
So when does that apply? I mean, at the end of a hearing? When someone's making their arguments? Or does the respondent have an opportunity then to summarize either in writing or provide a brief? Or is there transcript that's taken down by a court reporter? Or how do we document all this stuff?
Yes. So this new process, if anything, is document-intensive. And that's on purpose. That is so that the Office for Civil Rights can come in and conduct its own investigation and its own audit of complaints of sexual harassment. And that means that you're going to be documenting pretty much every step of the way. When your Title IX coordinator has their intake meeting with the complainant, you're going to be issuing issuing a summary of that intake meeting, and that's going to provide, you know, what you discussed, their complaint allegations and their rights. If they decide to file a formal complaint, they're going to issue a notice of allegations to both the complainant and respondent, so another form of documentation. The investigation process itself, you're providing both parties with the evidence that's being considered as relevant by the investigator as well as what, you know, whatever other evidence the investigator has that maybe they're not planning on considering or analyzing in the report. All of that has to be provided to the parties, the draft investigation report. And each step of the way, the parties have an opportunity to to provide a written response. You finalize the report, again, the parties have an ability to, and right to review and respond to that investigation report in writing. So by the time you, your your complaint gets to the decision maker, your decision maker has, you know, a stack of documents and investigation report and at least a couple of responses by the complainant and the respondent if they choose to submit those responses to assist them in making their decision. And then, once the live hearing process is undertaken, the parties are submitting written questions to your hearing officer. And your hearing officer has the written questions that are going to be asked, as well as as any evidence that was already included in your investigation file. At the conclusion, you have all of the the documentation that was created up to that point, plus now the written decision by your decision maker. So by the time the decision maker is making their decision about violations of policy and discipline, they should be able to make a decision whether someone knowingly made a false statement in bad faith.
So how are the hearings though? Are they going to be transcribed by a court reporter? I understand that a written question can be submitted, but the answer has to be somehow documented. So what's going to happen?
Yes. And the new Title IX regs do require that educational institutions record those hearings in some shape or fashion. So that means you're either doing some sort of video recording, audio recording, or having a court reporter in there to transcribe. And I've seen educational institutions do kind of all three, depending on the circumstances and depending what's been spelt out in their in their procedures. I've seen districts that do transcribe their hearings. I've seen other districts that do audio record their hearings. Once that that recording is made, whether or transcribed, it also has to be provided to the parties or the parties have to be provided an opportunity to review that as well. So there's, no, no problem. Appeals, I've talked about this a little bit already in terms of what the appeal process looks like, largely a paper process. There's only three grounds of appeals, four appeals that spelt out in the new Title IX regulations, one being procedure irregularity that affected the outcome, meaning, you know, because the district didn't follow its own policies and procedures, the outcome of the Title IX complaint process was affected. Or new evidence that was not reasonably available could have affected the outcome. We don't anticipate that happening too often. This third rationale or reason for being able to bring an appeal that a conflict of interest or bias generally or or specifically by the Title IX coordinator, investigator, or decision maker. This is probably the grounds that will be used most by by appellants. And that this is why it's critically important to make sure that the folks on your Title IX team are are trained. And that includes training on implicit, explicit bias, to be able to evidence that they're they're unbiased, they're trained to do their jobs, and they're they're there to serve without any sort of conflicts of interest. So these are the three grounds for appeal that are articulated in the new regulations. As I mentioned earlier, the district can choose to apply other bases for appeals. It doesn't have to. At this point, in the process, the parties had have had multiple opportunities to provide responses, provide information. So it's definitely our recommendation that the appeal rights kind of be limited to these these three grounds that have already been been spelt out. And this is also just for efficiency reasons. As you can imagine, with all these new team players involved, with the various review opportunities for reports and providing responses, we're not quite sure how that's going to affect essentially the timeline that we're processing complaints. It could very well be that this new process, although we're going to, you know, try our best to meet, you know, the 90-day kind of timeframe that we previously were working on, working with, we can probably expect some delays in kind of administering our our complaint process under these two, these new Title IX regulations, especially when you're think about, you know, having to schedule a hearing, find a room and everyone's schedule to serve as a hearing officer, to contact witnesses, and all the different hurdles that that we have to jump through to to get parties in in the same room. The last update for for our Title IX process as a result of the regulations is or has to do with the topic of retaliation. Retaliation includes pursuing code of conduct violations instead of processing something under Title IX. So this means essentially the district can be charged with retaliating against a complainant or respondent by choosing to follow some of the process instead of Title IX because maybe they find the new Title IX process to be too cumbersome. So it's important that if a Title IX complaint is brought forth, you're meeting, you know, the requirements of meeting with your complainant, having that intake meeting, allowing them the opportunity to move forward with a formal Title IX complaint. And if a formal Title IX complaint is followed, making sure that you are following your Title IX complaint process. Confidentiality rules still apply to the school districts and when we're thinking or Community College district. So this is, our FERPA still applies. We still have a requirement to protect the privacy rights of individuals, even though the parties do have a right to to collect evidence, talk to people, you know, the no gag orders. I mentioned the First Amendment rights of individuals. So, you know, just because someone is criticizing the complaint process or saying, you know, the way that the the district is processing this complaint is completely unfair or skewed towards complainants, we cannot discipline individuals for making comments like that. It is their First Amendment right to to criticize the administration in the complaint process. And the Department of Education has emphasized that that First Amendment right is is important. And that may also serve kind of higher purposes in in holding kind of a mirror to our actions and seeing maybe where our shortfalls or shortcomings are. I talked about this, false statements and when that applies and how that applies, so I won't spend too much time going over that. I promised a to-do list at the end of all of this. So this is kind of a to-do list of kind of what you're going to be doing in the immediate future or currently are doing to comply with these new Title IX regulations. And so we have, you know, reviewing our existence compliance officer titles, including who's our Title IX coordinator within that title since we have a duty to identify that individual, preparing and approving interim policies and regulations, determining who's going to be on your Title IX team, training your administrators who are going to serve in these Title IX roles, training employees on their reporting responsibilities, so making sure that your employees that are considered officials with authority know who to report Title IX or sexual harassment allegations to and kind of the chain of command that should be followed. And some of these things you're already in compliance with. So I will let Mona Esha kind of give us an update about where the district is with all of these new requirements.
Thank you, Melissa. You did a really great job in terms of detail and overviewing the new Title IX regulations. So thank you for that. We have over 30 employees on the new regulations. Probably now, since we've had quite a few participants on this call, even more on the regulations, we're required to post our trainings on the website. And so we are in compliance with that. We have our training posted on the website. We're in the process of posting and completing our interim. We're in the process of posting and completing our interim policies and regulations. And so we're doing that. Our Title IX team, our Title IX coordinators at Skyline, we have Vice President of Instruction, Dr. Jennifer Mendoza. And then our Deputy Title IX Coordinator is Michelle Batista, the Director of Student Services. At Kenyatta is Dean Max Hartman. And at CSM is Dr. Tabitha Conaway. And so those are our Title IX coordinators for each campus. We are still working regarding the, you know, investigators in the process and the expertise of those individuals. Because like Trustee Nouris pointed out, even though the regulations don't necessarily mandate that they are licensed attorneys or attorneys, some of them do require a certain level of skill and expertise and not just to assign someone a job, especially if they have other other job responsibilities within the district. So we've trained a lot of our employees on the new regulations. I'm doing even ongoing training with our athletic teams and our students. And so I've been doing nonstop training across the district in the last month or so on these new Title IX regulations. People have reached out to me and I'm very happy for that. So that's something great. Again, revising our website, updating it. It doesn't happen overnight, but we're trying to do it as quickly as possible. And so we have updated our website to include some of our new materials. We also have our Not Anymore videos that's directly related to Title IX for our students. It's typically presented at the new high, not new orientation, but for our students. So I think that kind of concludes our study session regarding the new Title IX regulations. I mean, it's ongoing. So this is definitely, this is the beginning, not even the middle. But we're working on making sure that we're in compliance.
Righty, so on my end, if there aren't any other questions, again, I want to thank the trustees, Chancellor Claire, all of the administrators at the district, students, employees, and just the campus, the community in general for allowing me to be here with you all this evening and to, you know, provide this kind of learning opportunity for everyone. So thank you all very much.
Melissa, I think we have a question by trustee Melinda Kern.
Well, first, I just wanted to thank you with Ms. Sims and Ms. Gallegos for a very thorough presentation and for bringing us up to speed, because I've been hearing a lot about these changes that were coming. And it was a long time in coming. And they were, you know, fairly extensive and major league type of changes, not just minor tweaks on this. So thank you for a very thorough job in presenting this and what's new. And I appreciate your giving us the to-do list at the end. And obviously, there's a lot of things that are already underway in changing the districts. But I'm wondering if you could maybe summarize a little bit specifically for the board. What are the top couple of things, maybe top three things that the board needs to be doing right now to make sure that we are fully in compliance with the new Title IX and fully up to speed on the new Title IX? Because I know a lot of these issues that you've laid out here on the to-do list that, you know, Monisha Sims and your team, you're already taking care of these things. And the HR department is on top of this stuff and the administration is on top of this. But there's probably things that the board needs to be doing that we may not be aware that we need to be doing. And maybe you could point that out for us right now.
Sure. I think the most important thing that the board can do and should do is really support your administrators. This is kind of an era where a lot of educational institutions, not just the San Mateo County Community College District, everyone's trying to figure out what to do and how to respond and how to best respond to these changes so that we are serving the purpose that, you know, we're all here to do, to make sure that our students are receiving a high-quality education, that individuals are receiving their their legal rights and afford to due process and the opportunities to, you know, take advantage of their employment and their educational opportunities here within our institutions. So what that means is you're going to be probably in the next months and even, you know, year to follow, you're going to be receiving requests about additional training. I anticipate that a lot of districts are going to be looking at maybe having to hire for positions to fill some of these roles or collaborating with outside institutions to be able to fulfill these responsibilities. So more than anything, I think kind of your call to arms right now is to really just be a team player in supporting the administration as all of this kind of gets figured out.
Is there any specific training beyond this that you would recommend for the board, for board members?
For board members, I think one of the the trainings that's helpful is just kind of, and today we did a dive into the new Title IX regulations. But I always advocate for harassment and discrimination and unconscious bias training for for individuals so that you can really see the work that has to get put into into fairly evaluating complaints and conducting thorough and impartial investigations and all the work that goes into that.
Can I just add to that? I know under the Title V regulations, the appeals go to the Board of Trustees. Under Title IX, it doesn't specify that they need to go to the Board of Trustees. But if they're going to go to the Board of Trustees, I would say the Board of Trustees need, they need specific training in the appeal process to know what to look for, what to evaluate.
Yes, that's a good point, Monisha, is that probably once that process is figured out, another study session on, you know, what the role of the board is with respect to processing appeals would be helpful.
Question. First of all, thank you again for all the information that you provided. There's so much here and there's so much to learn. And I learned a lot today. I appreciate all of your advice. What happens after the appeal? Do the appellate respondents have any further rights beyond us if they're not satisfied with the result?
So within the regulations, there's not anything that, you know, the district is required to do after the appeal process. Typically, the way that this has worked out in the past is that a complainant or respondent isn't satisfied with how things turned out at the district level. So then they'll try to go file a complaint with the Department of Education. And then we will have the Office for Civil Rights coming and saying, hey, we received this complaint. Basically, give us everything that you got to evidence that you met your your duties, that you weren't deliberately indifferent. So that's kind of the recourse that that complainants or respondents will have.
But if that happens, then is it incumbent upon the district then to defend its position at those next levels up? And then go through another process of documenting and going through? I mean, no one said anything about the federal funding that comes along with all this to pay for it. That doesn't exist, doesn't exist, right?
Yeah, everyone's favorite, show me the money, right? We keep getting new rules and new requirements and have to add to the duties that we have to complete, but not necessarily more resources. The district already has been complying with this kind of appeal process with the Office for Civil Rights. Fortunately, not too many complaints make it to kind of that that stage where the district is forced to kind of defend itself in its actions. But this is where you make it easier for yourselves by documenting and having that evidence. I have worked with districts in responding to Attorney General complaints after complaints of harassment and discrimination have been filed in Office for Civil Rights complaints. And I can tell you that there is a night and day difference between the districts that have the documentation and the evidence to show, hey, we processed this complaint. This is why we reached this decision compared to when I really have to dig deep to be able to explain why we acted a certain way or why we made a certain decision. And so this is where all of you, you know, the Board of Trustees, to every single employee of the district can help the district out by making sure that you are, one, complying with your Title IX process and following the chain of command that you are established or are going to be establishing and making sure that everything is documented. You know, sometimes it just takes an email or even having, you know, your annual composition book that includes your notes. All of that is valuable and those are valuable tools that the district can later use.
Thank you again.
No problem.
Are there any other questions?
Just one more, if I may. So, you know, some have said that, well, this is all, you know, a, you know, current administration attempt to, you know, curb complaints and charges of harassment and so forth. And, you know, this will all go away in the next administration or whatever, you know, should we be so lucky? But on the other hand, I believe what I've heard and probably confirmed this is that we should not count on any of this going away quickly, even if there is a change in administration. The process to undo and change in this will again be a lengthy, multi-year process to, if things were to change back, for example. So we should sort of accept that this is going to be the way that we're going to be doing business for the next several years. Is that a correct assessment?
Yes, I would agree. And that's really kind of highlighting the difference between regulations that have the full force and effective law and the administrative documents and opinions that we were previously working under. Now, if any of this is going to be changed, it essentially is going to have to undergo a new rulemaking process, which means not only having to write these new rules and regulations, but the public and the nation having an opportunity to review and comment. So you can imagine the amount of time that that would take to even undo any of these changes.
So President Schwartz, unless there's other questions. I just, again, I want to thank Melissa. Melissa, thank you for your time. I really appreciate your your deep knowledge on this topic. I actually heard you speak at a CEO conference, I think with a colleague. I was really impressed. And that was when this was just starting to take effect. And then, Monisha, as always, thank you for your work. You know, I've said to my team, and I think I've said it really to everybody in the district, we need to be disciplined and systematic in our approach to everything. And that is, and I can't emphasize how important that is, especially with respect to our human resources function. And so it's reassuring to me to know that we've got people that are looking at this, that we have processes in place. And board, I know that you hear from people sometimes. And I so appreciate when you follow the process and, you know, let us know right away that you've got a complaint. Certainly protect the identities of folks so that we can basically execute the proper procedures. I do appreciate that. So President Schwartz, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. My only question I would like to ask both of you is, it was a several-year process for them to come with the regulations. How many months' use did it take for you to really can take it all in and be able to explain to yourselves and get things going again for the district?
We haven't slept a wink.
I can only imagine, I can only imagine. So it's been a very lengthy process. We deeply appreciate it. I'm going to ask you to remove your, if you don't mind, because I can't, I know that we have one question from the public and I don't know if there's any more.
Yes, I see, I just had one question from John Pindmantel that asked if the public can ask questions. So I will close this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, John, you can ask your question.
Thank you. That was an excellent presentation. Thank you so much. Clearly, the the district staff and consultants have been proactive on this subject. It sounds like a much more rigorous process going forward. They could take significant staff and or vendor time. And I think it's an appropriate board-level question to ask, what is the scope of the problem? And do we know, given the emphasis on thorough documentation and procedure, this could have significant cost implications and staffing implications? And my question is, do we know how many complaints are made? How many complaints a year are made or over some period of time? In order to understand what is the trend and how significant of a problem this might be in order to manage? And think about that. Thank you.
I don't know, Monisha, you want to answer that?
So I don't have specific numbers to give, like, right now. I mean, you know, another time. However, what I would say is that with these, the narrowing definition of like the harassment and it's almost like going back through, you know, whatever complaints we've received in the past to see if it would be appropriate for this particular process. So I couldn't even tell you right now, given whatever our complaints are, like, you know what? This would definitely fall under Title IX. This would definitely fall under our APs or VPs. I think it's a little bit more complicated than that. I think going forward, I think a lot of schools and districts are in the same position in terms of going forward, what complaints will eventually fall under the Title IX new regulations and what complaints will end up going to student conduct, HR, or some of our board policies and administrative policies.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised or questions, unless there's any other questions or comments from board members?
No, just thank you to both Melissa and Monisha. I know, Monisha, you and I talked about this over a year ago and we finally got on a agenda. And just to hear the the level of attention that we need to give to this, the new changes is extraordinary. And I'm thankful for the to-do list and some of the issues that have been brought up that we need to have a focus on. And just know that you have the support of the board as we do move forward. And I just want to congratulate you on on making it this far, but knowing that you have the support to to go that extra mile to hopefully get the appropriate set of resources and team necessary to make sure that we're providing our faculty and our students and our staff the appropriate protections under Title IX.
Thank you, trustee Goodman. Yes, this has been a, we had, we did discuss this and I'm glad we were able to get to the board in the study session and Melissa has been great along, you know, with the administration or the being supportive.
And I'm going to assume that you will be back as this goes through the process to update the board as you're going along, which is, which is excellent idea. So thank you very much. I don't think we have anything, any other questions or comments from board members. So we'll go back to our agenda if we can have the screen back, please.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa, really great.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I will be jumping off, so thank you very much.
Oh, thank you for coming, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucky you. Okay, we're under new business now, 20-93A, approval of personnel items. Trustee Goodman, I know that you have a question. You want to enter in that now or under the, we take a motion on this first or how do you want to proceed? You're muted.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We can take a motion first.
Okay. So we need a motion for discussion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second? Thank you. So David Keun is here from Human Resources. If there are any questions, and I know that trustee Goodman, I think, has a question, so.
Yeah.
Get now?
Yeah, a few questions. You know, so there's, when you look at the job descriptions and look at some of the responsibilities that individuals within our district already have, I'm just wondering, is there that much of a stark difference between what we're asking this position to do and what other positions are already doing? Or, you know, if you if you could actually speak to the redundancy of this potential position?
And trustee Goodman, I've asked because... And Trustee Goodman, I've asked because I believe it's the Director of Student Aid, I can't remember the right term, Basic Needs, I'm sorry, District Director of Basic Needs position you're, you're asking about. I think that's, if I've got that right. If that's the case, yes. And what I've asked is, this is an initiative that really has been propelled by Tom Bauer and Jamila Moore. And we've had comprehensive conversation about this at Chancellor's Cabinet along with the college presidents. But I really would like Tom and Jamila, since they're closest to the position, to perhaps answer your question rather than David. I think they probably in a better position to answer for us.
Okay, yeah, I mean, whichever is fine. I just assume David's the HR.
Of course.
Would know the different roles or the job descriptions that we have, so that's, that's fine. Whoever can answer that.
I'll take a stab at it if it's okay. I think, I'm muted, good. Thanks for the question. So, yeah, as the Chancellor said, we've, we've discussed this with the presidents and kind of where this really came from was the Chancellor asking Jamila and I, well, Dr. Moore and I, sorry, to create a, a task force that was literally focused on addressing the basic needs of students. And the basic needs are really food insecurity, the food distribution program that falls into that, housing insecurity, and, and some assistance with referral to mental health agencies. And each of our colleges has incredible Spark Point centers. And I've had conversations with the Spark Point directors, particularly the Director at Kenyatta College, Adolfo Leva, who works with me every Friday at the food distribution at Kenyatta. And the conversations really started in the spring about, wouldn't it be great and ideal to have a position that really was designed to bring the three Spark Point Center Directors together? Sort of in the same way that we did with workforce development that we've done with our PIOs to really to get more collaboration between the centers, but then also have a position that isn't really focused at the college. It's, it's something that's actually going to bring those three together and then also work with the foundation on looking for needs directly, or funding rather, directly for basic needs. So we, we put this position at the same level as the Spark Point Directors and the responsibilities are largely the same, but it's really more of a coordination role. Because what we did see is that in doing that with workforce and in doing that with the PIOs, the collaboration has merited really, really good things. So one of the things that Jamila and I discussed, because we're really heading this task force right now, but it really isn't practical for a college president and vice chancellor to be heading this kind of a task force long-term. So we had a discussion at cabinet about this position really being the position that would drive the work of this task force with explicitly for basic needs. So our Spark Point centers do a lot of other things. They do financial counseling and all sorts of other work. And this would really be focused on just managing and speaking to basic needs of students. So that's really where the genesis of the position came from.
Yeah, no, I was referring to, I guess specifically, the redundancies of the positions. I mean, when you mention the Spark Point and the coordination, you would think that that's a part of their job already to coordinate between the two, other three campuses. And then also the position with the foundation. You know, their, that's their basic role to find the resources to address the needs that we see, that we set, you know, set before them. And so it just seems a little bit redundant additionally, you know, considering the financial situation we see ourselves in today as well as what the Chancellor has informed us that we're going to see ourselves in, in the next year or two. And so that's, that's my concern around the redundancy. Because, you know, as we began to have expectations of tightening up our belts and doing more with less, and then at the same time, we're, you know, at bringing on more positions, it just seems a little bit fiscal irresponsible. Because, you know, where are the funds coming from? You know, that's obviously a question. You know, one-time funds to address this is not setting forth the priority that, or even showing or sending the message that this is of, you know, real need by the district if it's, if we're using one-time dollars to address it. And then additionally, is there any positions like this elsewhere throughout the state that we can kind of draw from to show or to express that? You know, obviously it's something that's doable and it's not redundant. And then, you know, I'll stop there just because I, I think really just at this point, you know, if we're going to be making cuts or having expectations to make cuts, keeping them as far away from the classroom as possible and the sites as possible, just to create another district-wide position just seems very irresponsible as a board as we look forward to, you know, the next year.
So I'll, good, great questions, Trustee Goodman. And I'd invite President Moore also to, to comment. I think one of the things that we've found as we've gone into this new mode of operation is the need for more district coordination. And so in terms of student basic needs, we're actually asked to do more. So for instance, the, the, the food distribution that occurs every week, that's an incredible amount of work that we have one Spark Point Coordinator, primarily Adolfo, taking on in addition to, it's not sustainable. So what we're trying to do here is manage, you know, and, and speak to what the board schools are, which are meeting student basic needs and certainly we do that at the sites, but we're doing even more now. And the requirement for this coordination really spans all three campuses. Certainly, we could make it, I mean, we could make it an interim position and try it out with one-time funds. The, what we're really trying to do is, as we move, as we move further along, we're hoping to find an external funding source, permanent, permanent funding source such like, and we're actually thinking that we could actually do this with auxiliary services, that, that the profits that they spin off, we could self-fund or it could be self-funded. But what I do know is that we're not, we just do not have the people at a, at a coordination level to continue to pull off what we're doing. It's not sustainable for the long haul.
Right, but are, are some of the responsibilities, even if we're talking about running the distribution center in coordination, in conjunction with the food bank, is that something that could be given to a classified staff or some of, even this position? Could it be broken up between, you know, two or three people versus giving it a, a district position? I mean, I just don't understand the cost we're looking at or even the responsibilities. Do we know whether or not this is a district position versus, you know, someone else that's already has the positions at our different sites that could actually take these responsibilities on and do this work?
I think those are all very valid questions, Trustee Goodman. I, I will add what I can to, to, to that. I think the reason and how we got to the director position itself is because we're kind of in the middle of already doing what you have just described. And what's happening is one Spark Point person, myself, a vice chancellor, we end up kind of paying some other folks work out of class. And then also we recognize that because the three colleges having a little more than others in different spots, it became apparent to us that Adolfo, as one Spark Point person, could not do all of it, even if he was getting assistance from me. We were already kind of paying certain folks work out of class. So we were trying to piece it together. And then we recognized, because of also long-term goals from the board with regards to housing and making sure that student basic needs are addressed in their totality district-wide, we said, let's start with the task force because of the pandemic, the immediate need, trying to get food out. We recognize that a collaborative effort in centralizing certain services actually helped us to avoid some of the work out of class and trying to find the right fit. It, we may find it may not be as a director, but what we are in, in counting right now is the disjointedness and the fact that Adolfo has other responsibilities and trying to cobble that together, knowing that folks are at other sites. So we're trying to find a person to give that one set of responsibilities to for coordination. And maybe it's director, maybe it is not. But we got there because trying to pull in the right level person, the person who can do that higher level quality of work, do all the coordination of directing folks that would be PSCs or lower, trying to coordinate with Second Harvest, trying to coordinate with Auxiliary Services. We recognize that maybe the best level position is a director for that centralization. Because since April, we have been kind of piecemealing this and doing the work out of class. And then we recognize, okay, now that we are extending this because, as is surprised to all of us, the pandemic is lasting longer. That's also another reason how we got here, because Adolfo has returned to his full-time position at Kenyatta. I'm kind of juggling. And at some point in time, we want to be able to turn this over to someone who can centralize those efforts, also in line with student housing and how those needs are going, we'll have to meet those as well. So we're trying to find kind of this catch-all person that can do this. So that's why it kind of reads in the manner that it does, but that's how we got to this point because of where we started.
Trustee Menel, Karen?
Yeah, it, it, it seems like, you know, I recognize what the problem is that you're trying to address. And we, you know, we've got one guy that's, that's very busy and there's a lot of stuff going on that we've been trying to piece together. And it really is, you know, it's no one's job, yet it needs to be somebody's job. But my concern, and I think it may be the same concern that Trustee Goodman has, is that we're trying to, you know, create a long-term solution to a very tactical, short-term problem. And it may make more sense to have a little more thorough analysis of what are we trying to accomplish? What is the right nature of the position? How does it fit into our budget long-term, which is a lengthier discussion? And what you, you sort of really need right now during the midst of this pandemic is kind of a, a short-term, one-time fund position that's not going to encumber us long-term if we face difficult budget challenges up ahead and so forth. So I think that's kind of where I'm having some of the same discomfort as Trustee Goodman is, is that we're, we're sort of very quickly creating a director-level position for, you know, with a very amorphous charge of responsibilities when what we really need is some short-term help to deal with the food distribution program and coordination across the three campuses. And maybe that's what we should be addressing much more tactically and have a more thorough discussion of what the right long-term solution is for addressing student basic needs. Because now if we start to talk about housing, you know, we're not even sure what, what housing is going to look like or what form that's going to take and what kind of, you know, that's a whole separate discussion that we need to have about how does student housing get managed? So that, that would be my thoughts and reactions to this.
Any comments from the board members? Chancellor Ryan?
Yeah, I guess I would.
Trustee Oliver?
Well, you know, I, I think these are valid questions. So perhaps this needs more discussion and more study. You know, I tend to agree with the comments the other trustees just made.
Chancellor Claire?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, Trustee Nerus?
I, I, I understand the discussion, you know, from both sides, but I think that this is brought to the board not in haste. And I, I can see that a lot of thought has gone into this by the, by the administration here. And this recommendation is one which is made, I don't think frivolously as far as that goes. I don't think that it's, it was created just to basically deal with one need. Obviously, what we're going through right now has elevated the needs that are here always. And I, I think we've been talking about food insecurity and housing insecurity and transportation and a bunch of other things now, for as long as I've been on this board. It's not something that just started with COVID and with the economy. It's just now been enhanced and amplified by these things. And so I don't, I don't see it as something that would not be valuable to the district to develop this position and, and task, task it with the responsibility of now taking us the next, the next level in these areas of concern for us. And I would expect that that would be one of the things that would come out of that. If we have a director that can coordinate the work between the campuses, the work will get done better and more effectively and at a higher level for our students and our community. And perhaps then take all these needs on a continuing basis going forward. And I, I heard somewhere that this might even be a position that could be funded out of other sources other than the general fund. So I think it's something that we need to move forward with. I mean, last, last, last week, last meeting, we're talking about going to the, to the, to the reserves and digging money out of that to, to take care of people, you know? I mean, this is similar to what we were talking about them, but it's, it's basically identifying it as a continuing need. And I think we know these are continuing problems. So this may be the way to address them going forward long-term.
Trustee Goodman?
Have we, just a simple yes or no? I don't want to drag this on. I know we got to get to other, get to the vote, but have we done an audit of the multiple positions within a district that do, that this job description currently is asking for?
I'm going to David Pugh on this. I don't have a yes or no, Trustee Goodman. Yeah.
Right, I mean, so, you know, what I would say to that is, I mean, we've, we've, we've sort of figured out what the level, based again on, you know, these past four or five months of, with, with the food drive at the College of San Mateo, obviously now at Skyline College with that starting and with the anticipation of other programs potentially coming into the picture. So what we did was we looked at having Adolfo, you know, having him as a Director of Spark Point being a major, you know, point of, of contact and coordination.
No, I know, I just, I just wanted to know whether or not, I mean, because to Trustee Nurse's point that this isn't a, a decision that was made in haste. And then you would assume, if that is the case, that we would have done an audit, a simple audit as to whether or not we're being redundant in what we're asking this position to do. We've had food banks at the different colleges for the last few years. And by having the food distributions, the way we're doing them by the cars, you know, one can even argue that it's a little bit easier and easier to manage than it was when they were actually having lines and lines come up. I'm not sure and I don't want to make a judgment on that, but I'm just asking, you know, if there was an audit, a simple audit of what the redundancies are. If that, if that hasn't been the case, have we even looked at the, the position? When you're talking about the foundation, have we filled the positions at the foundation that already, that can conserve some of the, the role with regards to finding resources currently?
So I, I, I think what I'll say is, this is a position coordinates the work of other directors. So it's going to have to be at a director level if you're going to, if you're going to coordinate the work of other directors. You, you are all asking.
All due respect, that didn't answer the question. I was just asking. So a position that, that does some of this work at the foundation level, have we filled that position? If so, is that person going to not be doing this work and why wouldn't have?
Yeah.
Raising, one second, let me finish.
Yeah, sorry.
It would not be fundraising of this position also, should that not be under the foundation? Just that aspect of it. And then when it comes to the positions of coordinating other directors, is that, is that, is that something that's needed, number one? Or could it be other duties as assigned with those directors and say, hey, you need to coordinate or have some plan of action of how you coordinate? And those three individuals could probably report to someone that says, hey, yes, this is appropriate, whether it's a dean or someone at the Chancellor's office, I'm not sure. But it just seems as though to Trustee Nurse's simple point that this was not done in haste, that it, that if we can't answer these very cursory answers, questions, then, you know, we, we need to take it back to the drawing board and come back with these questions answered.
Sure, no, no, fair enough. And I didn't mean to interrupt. So first of all, with respect to the foundation, they don't do operations. This is heavily into operations and there's coordination with fundraising, of course, you, you, you. So, so it, this is an operational, heavy-duty operational position. Secondly, you're right. I, I think what, what you, we had, and when I say we, I'm talking about myself, the three college presidents and those in Chancellor's Cabinet, we don't, we don't just put positions out there and not think very carefully about them. So I think what's happened is you, as a board, you probably haven't had the benefit of really us making a strong case. So, so to me, I think what we need to do on this, because I can sense that the board's not ready to take a position and I, and I respect and understand that, is let's go back and really make a strong case and, and do that audit, Trustee Goodman, or whatever it is we want to justify the position so that you have a little bit more to go on. And I really do trust the people that are closest to this. So that you have a little bit more to go on. And I really do trust the people that are closest to this work that have been doing it. And I think we my role as chancellor is to listen to that. When I look around and I start looking at assigning things, there's there's no one on the bench. And so it that's that's part of the issue as well. But it's not lost on me that it is an expense and, you know, we we look at every single expense. So again, I'm not arguing. I think you've made excellent points. And if I were in your shoes, I'd probably be asking the same questions. We just had the benefit of going through the exercise and asking those tough questions that I think, you know, you're you're raising here.
Yeah, thank you. No, it's it's no, you know, I think it has nothing to do with trust. I think we trust our staff. But it's our job as, you know, voices of the public to to scrutinize, you know, decisions and go back and forth. And obviously, it's a little bit, the the responsibility falls on administration to convince us. And, you know, if we choose to vote, we vote and and that's it, we move on. But it has nothing to do with trust. And I appreciate the work that has been done on behalf of our students.
Trustee Mandelker.
Yes, Chancellor Claire, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think, you know, you you and the cabinet have thought this through and have a pretty good idea in mind of why this is necessary. I think the issue is, I don't think the board is is where you are, and I think you need to bring the board up to speed on this and and give us an information report on the, you know, the sort of the need and the rationale for creating this position. I would welcome that and look forward to that, to hear that and then come to your same conclusion and support you in this. A couple of things, though, that I would like to see when you do that presentation and bring us up to speed is right now, I think we have a little bit of a hodgepodge of different programs being run out of different areas. You know, we have the Spark Point programs. We also have had, though, the, you know, sort of grab-and-go food and potentially hot food meal distribution things that were largely being run out of bookstore staff, I believe, have been, you know, taking the lead on that out of auxiliary services. So that's another area that potentially would be folded under this. You know, I think we all, fingers crossed, hope that the COVID pandemic is not going to last forever. You know, at some point, we won't be doing food distribution out of the parking lots. We will be back to having people on campus accessing the Spark Point centers, accessing some of the innovative things we've had, like the farmer's market approach to food distribution that we were doing at Skyline. And so it would be kind of nice to have a sense of the long-term vision of this position and the integration of these different functions and the need for it versus just the short-term need that we've got two parking lots full of people every, you know, two days a week and we need somebody to help coordinate that. That that's probably a very true statement and I don't want to minimize that need. I recognize it is a huge burden on our staff to manage that. But maybe that's something that's a little different than creating a full-time director level position. That may be a one-time position or a short-term position, or maybe something where we need to go back to second harvest and say, hey, you need to provide the person to coordinate this stuff because doing food distribution, you know, you're welcome to use our parking lots and we'll help with the facilities and manage the traffic and set up the cones and that kind of thing. But, you know, when it comes to the coordination management, maybe that's not something that's our responsibility to be doing, but it's their responsibility to be doing. So those are the kind of analyses, I think, that you need to bring back to us to help, you know, justify that this is a position that we need to create on a long-term, ongoing basis.
Okay, fair enough.
Trustee Norris, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, you know what? I'm glad that we've had this discussion because I think we do need to hear a little bit more on it in order to have the board be able to understand it in more detail and to understand it better and be able to make an informed decision. One of the observations that I guess I've made over the several months that we've been going through this COVID and dealing dealing with each other the way that we have been. And actually, I I think since the chancellor has come on board is that, and I think we've all heard it and have appreciated the fact that the colleges, not that they ever were really in competition with each other, have been working much more collaboratively on many levels. And this is just one example of one of them that has now surfaced. And and perhaps this this collaboration between the campuses on doing other things as well is going to improve the way everything gets done. And I think this is probably a little bit what was leaning towards the idea of now having maybe the district be able to coordinate some of the good work that the campuses are doing there individually, but working together and and trying to enhance it at at a higher level. And I think that's kind of where administration was probably going with this. But I look forward to hearing a report in the future on this so that we understand better as well and then can make the correct decision. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I would just like to add that I hope this comes back for our next meeting. I have the feeling that I'm going to pull it and it's not going to be included in this this one. Because I think the the situation has been growing over the over the weeks and months that we've been into this situation. And I think it needs to be, if we can possibly come back with with a better informed information for the board, that they have a better understanding and hopefully it will go forward. That would be my request. And I'm also would like to have the option of I hope that you it would not be a permanent lifetime situation, but you'll have to take a look at it. It says 12 months from September 24th on, so maybe that time will have to be adjusted. But to look at that in 12 months, because every day is a new adventure and we don't know if what's going to happen, if you're going to need more or less. So to keep the options open. So that would be my request. So if the board is comfortable, can we remove that part from the recommendation for the district office, which is what's it under? D E two, E two, remove that from the personnel report at this time and it will come back for the next meeting? Is that possibility, Chancellor?
Yes, absolutely. And and I actually, I appreciate the feedback. Welcome the opportunity to kind of share our thinking and and understand the comments. So thank you.
Okay, so we need to alter the the motion to exclude D two, D two. Whoever made the motion?
I'll I'll change the motion. Yes.
Thank you, Justie Oliver. Excluding E two and second by Trustee Norris. Thank you. So we'll go back to we have the motion on the floor. Is there any questions or public comments? Hearing none, I will call for the for the vote of the board. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. And motion passes by unanimous as well. So we are down to other recommendations, twenty-nine, one oh three B, the ratification of the chancellor's recommendation to hold all classes, services and operations with limited exceptions online or remotely for spring 2021 semester. We would call for the motion in a second to discuss this recommendation.
Don't move.
Thank you. And thank you. And Chancellor Claire, you'd like to introduce your recommendation?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, President Schwartz. And, you know, as I mentioned at our last business meeting, that we we actually had an information item on on this issue so that you'd have a chance to have a discussion and hear additional feedback. And now we're asking you to formally ratify the recommendation. We do need a decision, one way or the other, because there are a couple thousand sections that need to put be put into banner and so on and so on. There's a there's a lot of logistics that that are dependent upon the decision. I would be remiss, although it says the chancellor's recommendation because it comes through the chancellor, I do want to acknowledge the work of the the academic senate and Vice Chancellor McBean, and I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chancellor McBean in just a second. But Academic Senate President Wallace, thank you and your colleagues, because I really feel I feel like, once again, we came together. And I know you sent your separate recommendation and I believe our recommendation basically is the same. We really have done this together, even though we have our separate names on the document. The the thing that I before I before I turn it over to Aaron, what I want to convey to you is we heard you loud and clear about some of your concerns about operating in this environment that we're trying to operate in. And it's the same conversations that are being held across the country. And one of the things that we wanted to do this evening is talk about the things that we are doing for students, not to brag about them or say, hey, look what we're doing, but just to be matter of fact, this is what we're doing. Based upon what you've heard, what else are we missing? What else should we be doing? What else can we be doing? But we want you to have some context in terms of the things that we are doing to support students. We're going to turn right around. It's kind of a three-part thing, but if that's not for tonight, we also heard your concerns about workforce and workforce support. So again, I'll be working with President Moore and and Vice President Norris in terms of setting an agenda. But we'd like to talk about our workforce efforts and even bring in some of our partners that we've been talking to in the community. We're hoping to do that at the next meeting. And then certainly not left, but not not last, but not least, a third installment of this conversation is what are we doing for employees? And you have a pretty good sense of that. But we we'd like to have that conversation at a future meeting as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chancellor McBean. And again, I do want to acknowledge the the work of the district academic senate and frankly, the work of everybody, our classified professionals, the administration, again, we have all stepped up to the plate. I'm really proud of our organization. So with that, Dr. McBean.
Thank you, Chancellor Claire, President Schwartz, members of the board, colleagues and those out there in TV land. We wanted to bring a presentation to you just to share some information based on the conversations from the last board meeting. Trustee Mandelker, you asked some questions about what was the impact on spring and the persistence through to the the fall enrollments. So I want to share some of that data with you tonight as well as what we've been doing, as Chancellor Claire mentioned, the actual support that we've been put in place and our engagement efforts with students. And so it's going to take place in a couple of different parts. I'm going to start with the district level information, talk to you a little bit about the data and what we've been doing at the district level. And then have each of the three colleges talk a little bit about specifically what they've been doing in their engagement efforts with students. So if I can share my screen, I'll get into that for you. Excellent. All right. Let me move everyone here. Maneuvering the different pictures here on the screen. There you go. All right. So where I wanted to start is really that I have three slides for you specifically with some data on the impact of the COVID emergency on our spring semester and the retention of students in the fall. And so these three slides are kind of taken together as a whole for you. So the first one really looks at what was the direct impact on our spring semester. And so I'm going to take you through this just from the left to the right, from the top to the bottom, and try to explain what you see here. This really looks at what what the the student success was in that semester, looking specifically at grades. So if you come over here to the spring 2019 column and then look at the spring 2020 column, you'll see the biggest change was a huge increase in the number of EW grades that students received, and those are excused withdrawals. You may recall that we brought to you the discussion about the changes that the state chancellor's office made and suspended some Title V regulations with regard to allowing the EW grade. This is a way for students to be able to withdraw without impacts to their GPA and to be able to receive refunds or credits that they could carry forward all the way through the end of the spring semester. And they can actually apply for EW up to a year after the end of that semester. These waivers of the Title V regulations continue. They continue through the summer and they're expected to be continued by the Board of Governors through the continue through the fall. They and they're expected to be approved through the spring semester as well by the Board of Governors at its next meeting. So that was the biggest change. And so you see those top two rows of the EW and regular W add up to the next row. So those were all the withdrawals. And you see there was, as you might expect, an increase in the number of students who withdrew from classes. These aren't individual students. These are withdrawals. One student made withdrawal from two, three, four different classes that they're taking. The next line shows you what the the unsuccessful attempts were, Ds, Fs, or for the spring semester, only no pass grades. You remember working with the academic senate, we suspended the F grade and only awarded no pass for students who otherwise would have failed so that we didn't see any negative impact on them for financial aid or academic standing, et cetera. And so you see that there was actually a decrease in those letter grades because most of those significant number of students opted for the EW as opposed to a no pass or even a D in the class. And so that really minimized the damage, the harm to students. Then you see our overall success numbers and and the total enrollment. And so that translates directly into the two bars on the right-hand side. You'll see the success rates were relatively similar with really the only change being instead of finishing out the class with a a no pass or an F, really an increase in the withdrawals and our withdrawals are figured into the calculation of overall success rates. What this says to me, my interpretation of this is, yeah, we had an impact. Students exercised the EW, but for the most part, students stuck it out through the end of the semester. And they were relatively successful in line with the previous the previous spring semester. And so I credit that to the faculty making the transition that they did and really making sure to keep the students engaged all the way up to the end. Counseling faculty encouraging students to hold on and all the things we described that we did in the spring to make students comfortable sticking with us through the end. And so I I think that that's my takeaway from from that piece. If I can continue to the next two slides, and of course, you can ask questions as we go, but how did this then translate into summer and fall enrollment? You may not be able to read this. You're not really supposed to. What I really wanted to highlight is the the chart on the left is from summer and the one on the right is from fall. If the yellow bars are going in the right direction, that means we're increasing. If they're going in the left direction, that means we're decreasing. So the summer term saw actually a huge increase. We had a 30% increase in enrollment and a head count of students going in our summer term, even though it was 100% online. And then as we get into fall, what we've seen is relatively stable head count, so about the same number of students within a percent of the the number of students from the previous fall semester. But a decrease, a 9% decrease in overall enrollment. So same number of students, they're just taking a few less classes as we might expect here in this situation with whatever the situation is at home. Kids at home in online school. I know I'm helping my nine-year-old virtually with her math homework in her online fourth grade class. Folks have had troubles, you know, with employment. And so folks are just taking a few less units, but our head count is relatively flat compared to last fall. And with that, then what's our overall persistence numbers? So looking at the past five springs persisting with us from summer to fall, what we see is, we did see a drop. We saw about a 3.7% decrease in our overall persistence rate from the spring. But let me contextualize that a little bit for you. Disaggregating this data, digging into it, the biggest drop that we saw was among single course takers or students taking less than six units. And the biggest portion of those students taking three or less units, the students who were only taking one or two classes in the spring semester haven't come back to us in in the summer or fall. Some of those classes, you know, we can come up with reasons for this. Some of those classes that they were taking aren't necessarily being offered this fall just because they're not essential infrastructure, so they couldn't be done face-to-face. But they couldn't be migrated online. Or a student taking one class in the spring semester, you know, isn't in a a transfer degree program. And so you know, here in this situation, they may have just decided that they didn't want to continue in the the virtual environment. It's not to diminish the importance of those courses or the importance of those students. It's really to say that that was the biggest drop that we saw. And I think what I heard and our concern as well is are the students that are on their degree and transfer path, are students who are from traditionally marginalized groups, are they continuing with us? And I think they're comfortable. The answer is, for the most part, yes. That's coconut water, folks, just in case you're wondering.
If I can interrupt your question, Dr. McBean?
Yes, Trustee Mandelker, please.
So in disaggregating the data, you you sort of haven't mentioned one or the other, the striking declines, which, you know, in reflection is is very logical and makes a lot of sense, which is amongst our international students, which fell by over 35%. And those students are also probably most likely to be full-time students. And so that's a disproportionate hit on the number of course events or whatever we call this in terms of the total enrollment when we lose, you know, even though it may only be 300 students, I mean, it's still a significant number of students, but we lose 300 international students, that's probably 300 times, you know, what, six courses each or something like that. So it's 1,800 course enrollments that have been dropped. So it's a significant portion of the decline right there. In fact, I would argue that probably is the entirety of the decline. And actually, the other areas have probably actually gone up slightly.
Looking at the data, you're absolutely right. It's a substantial hit to the overall enrollment numbers because international students are required when they're here with us as F1 visa holders to enroll in a minimum of 12 units. It wasn't the totality, but it was a substantial portion of those students who who didn't return to us. However, we we have been able to continue to engage our international students who have had to remain in their home countries in our online environment, but because they're not holding that F1 visa, they aren't required to be in 12 units minimum. So some of them are taking less courses, but they're still taking courses with us, hoping to return to our district when when that's available. So these are the numbers and and Trustee Mandelker, as always, appreciate the the intense interest in that. I want to move to what we've been doing as a district-wide and if folks have any additional questions about the the specific enrollment numbers or persistence numbers.
Could you just comment when we disaggregate the numbers? Because you have you have the overall numbers, but when they're disaggregated the way we typically disaggregate, were you seeing any disproportional impacts based upon the data you looked at?
Great question. So we looked at a lot of our traditional disaggregations from race, ethnicity, first generation status. And compared to previous terms, we did not see any significant or alarming increases. That's not to say that we don't see a loss of students between the spring and the fall term always. But there wasn't a dramatic change that would have led us to say, there's a significant issue with one student population or another. Our first generation students, our low income students persisted at relatively the same rates that they had in the previous about five spring to fall transitions. And so I know that was a primary concern, both of Trustee Mandelker and Trustee Goodman. So we did look at that and it's in line with previous years. As always, we want as many students to persist as possible, but there wasn't a dramatic increase there.
Question?
Question? No, Trustee Nurse, yes.
Yes. In looking at basically the early withdrawals, which was something we talked about a little bit earlier, did you go deeper and see what areas of the the curriculum that we're offering had the biggest hits and were it by department or was it by teacher or because we're going into a whole new area now of teaching offline. And, you know, it's not always just the students, it's how is the subject being delivered? You know, not what's learned, but what's being taught. And so I'm wondering whether or not there is some correlation between the delivery mechanism, which maybe resulted in people dropping out of classes or early withdrawal. And is there any, I mean, I know we're just new into this, but is there any kind of assessment by administration or deans of how how faculty are performing in this new format? I mean, are there people that are simply saying, well, here's a reading list of the books and here are four tests that you have to take and we don't have to have a class and there are no lectures. And so there's your grade. I'm wondering if that's happening and if that's the kind of delivery that we're looking for and what we would be doing about it.
Some great questions. So on the excuse withdrawal question specifically, there there wasn't necessarily a systematic pattern of excuse withdrawals in particular. It was really based on the individual cases of the students and what classes they happened to be in. But if a student was going to exercise the EW, they typically did it across all of their classes. So it was wasn't specific to the class they were taking. It was definitely specific to their situation. As far as this this transition to the online environment and Jeremy, if you want to speak to this as well, please do. That was part of the reason that we really invested in that district wide coordination over the summer to provide our 25 hour quality online teaching and learning training to 600 faculty to really bring folks up to speed on what's expected in the online environment. Is it perfect right now? Probably not. But it is significantly better than it would have otherwise been because folks had that training. I do know also that our professional development coordinators at all three campuses are doing regular series of engaging faculty in just, you know, learning to use the tools, you know, trying to level up their skills and providing that support. Because one of the most important things in this and supporting the quality teaching is not necessarily just having the training, but it's having that network of peers. When something comes up in the moment, who do they reach out to? Like, I know Kenyatta College has been working on pairing faculty so they can reach out to each other when they're troubleshooting different things in their classes. And so part of our work this semester is to find out what else is needed, what additional training is needed, make sure that we're providing that as we continue to improve, as we move into the spring semester and beyond. Because even when we're not in this emergency pandemic situation, I think we all expect that the interest and demand for quality online teaching is going to be very significant. And I know as a district, as a senate, as a faculty, we want to make sure that we distinguish ourselves as a district that offers that quality online experience.
Another question, please.
Trustee Mandelker?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chancellor McBean. So the the big sort of transition in the numbers seems to be into this excuse withdrawal category that was created for this situation. So I'm really wondering, you know, how much we drilled into that, you know, massive number of 5,000 some students to figure out what it's really consists of because I I think this addresses the concern that myself and I think some of the other trustees have about students that have just fallen through the safety net that, you know, have disappeared after March 19th of last spring semester and that we've never heard from again. So first question is, do we actually do any follow up with these excuse withdrawal students? And see, for example, have they re-enrolled in the summer or in the fall semester? Or have we just lost them altogether? And then part of that is, why did they do the excuse withdrawal? Was it because they were in a class that was a hands on lab or music or dance class, for example, that just doesn't have an online counterpart to it, so the class simply ceased to exist? Or was it because, you know, they couldn't afford to live here anymore and they've moved away or they had to work more hours to pay the rent or something and they they just didn't have time to or the ability to take classes anymore? Or was there, you know, some other reason they couldn't make the transition to online learning if they didn't have a computer or whatever? You know, it would be helpful to know, you know, what the rationale was behind those EW students and and is there anything we can do to ensure that we get them back on track and completing their courses at some point in the future?
So with regard to the EW students, to my knowledge, we haven't done a specific analysis of just those who took the EW, no. It's it's one of those things where as we're making this emergency adjustment, we're trying to engage as many students as possible. But I, to my knowledge, we haven't dug down specifically just on the EW students, no.
Keep in mind, yeah, keep in mind, I appreciate that. It's a great question. I think as you see some of the college efforts, you'll see some of that outreach. But you also got to keep in mind that the overall course success rate was pretty stable, you know, went from 75 to 73. So that EW basically replaced the Ws. And it's a mechanism where it's not harming the students. They would have been W students otherwise. And and this is an aggregate, obviously, and we're not talking about specific students. But I think it's important to focus that the overall course success rate didn't really change all that much.
That's what that's one way of looking at it, but I think it's worth actually doing that drill and to make sure that that is actually the correct, you know, movement of the of the feet of, you know, where students are moving to, that it was just, you know, taking students that would traditionally have dropped because it's true, you know, we don't keep 100% of those students in a course from the first day of the semester to the last day of the semester, you know, some percentage drop out every year, every semester, we know that. However, you know, are they dropping out for the same reasons now or are there other factors and are they returning and persisting at the same rates? That that's what I'm concerned about is because we've heard anecdotally that students, especially our most vulnerable students, are falling through the cracks of the safety net. And I just want to get a feel for, is that actually a significant issue? Is it 10% of our students? You know, if every one of those EWs was a marginal, you know, marginalized student at risk falling through the safety net, then that that's a cause for concern because that's about 10% of our students. But if it's just, oh, you know, they would have dropped anyway. And now as instead of getting a W, they can get an EW and not have an impact on the transcript, well, that's a different story that that we've got. So it would be helpful to know what was really going into that.
Sure. Point taken, Trustee Mandelker. Thank you.
Erin, I have a bit of anecdotal data that I'd like to share with with Trustee Mandelker. This is Tammy Robinson. To your point about what why students dropped, we had a class, just for instance, we had a class of medical assisting students at Kenyatta. And they actually refused to continue. Many of them had, we gave them several opportunities. You know, we did the class, we were just starting with COVID, allowed them to take their clinicals in summer, we did the labs. But but that entire class of students decided that they were not comfortable or they had family members with pre system conditions and they chose to take the EW rather than complete. So again, many of this was happening when students were just finding out what even what COVID even was in being in a pandemic. So, I mean, again, every student had a different reason for taking that EW. And it really did help them a lot because it didn't hurt them academically.
Thank you for sharing that, Dr. Robinson. And I know you'll share more about Kenyatta's specific efforts after we talk about what's been doing, we've been doing district wide. So if I can share a little bit about that, though, to to say, these are the things that we have been doing to keep students engaged and to help them transition from spring to fall. I want to take you through some of this and to provide you with the information to give you a sense of of the scale in this new environment. Technology distributions has been, you know, one of the the biggest efforts, thanks to the district ITS team, Dominique Gravall and his team. We set up a request form, district ITS is essential workers. They've been on onsite at all three campuses and at the district office, processing requests, working with the library and then scheduling pickups for students who need the technology. Chromebooks, calculators and hotspots are the most popular items that students need. And right now, hotspots are the the most in demand and the most difficult to get ahold of. And we have a couple hundred more hotspots on order that are supposed to arrive by the end of September. We have about 74 folks on a waiting list at one campus, another 60 at another. And so as soon as the hotspots come in, we notify the students that they're available and we arrange for them to come to the access points to to pick those up. So technology distributions are continuing and will need to continue as we move through the fall and into the spring semester. But we're we have technology on order and we have that process pretty well dialed in. And students, they are indicating right now, hotspots are the way to go. Some of the quotes I included for the board in this, just so you can see, and we have a lot of testimonials from students. It's making an impact. This really is relieving a lot, relieving a lot of stress. You have multiple folks in a single household trying to access the internet, folks trying to work from all different places. And so having that access and some of our technology doesn't work on, for example, if you got an iPad at home, that's not going to run your Labster software, for example. So you're going to need to borrow that Chromebook. And so we've been making sure that we're providing the technology that's needed for the platform students are needing to use for their classes as well. But because of those hotspot issues, and you may have seen this in in one of your updates, we've now opened Wi-Fi in the parking lots across the three colleges. Thanks to the folks who've been who worked on this initiative, Dr. Manuel Alejandro Perez down at Kenyatta, Michaela Ochoa, Mike Holzklaug, Harby Anderson, when he was with us, Tracy Huang and the educational services, ITS crew installing hardware to make the Wi-Fi available, especially at CSM, public safety facilities and the college cashiers even. So it's it's a, this is just to celebrate these efforts. As the chancellor said, I just really want to highlight this is the number of folks it takes to get involved every time that we do a new operation to provide new services that are, we're not, we're not used to providing, but in this environment, we have to make sure that we're doing everything we can. So now these are available. We've had about 50 reservations in the last week and a half at each of the campuses. And we've got over 200 hits to our reservation system across each of the campuses. So we expect that this, the interest in this is going to increase as more students learn about it. The only time we shut down the parking lots are on Sundays and when we're doing the food distributions, just because of all the folks. So Wi-Fi access is one of the services that are keeping students engaged in their classes now that are online. Bookstore distributions have been another huge shift in how we operate. We've been taking way more web orders than we're used to. And then, as you see in the picture, our bookstores are no longer filled with students, but they're filled with packing material and folks shipping all of those orders as fast as they come in. We're also arranging in person pickups at all of the three bookstores and you see the numbers there just as of September 15th. The process is now getting smoother. And so we expect to continue those into the spring as we're processing more web orders and making sure that students can come pick up their materials and their books for their classes. Shifting to the basic needs specifically, so one of the things that we know are helping to keep students engaged is to supporting their basic needs. As was mentioned earlier, we do have a basic needs task force that Vice Chancellor Bauer and President Moore are co-chairing. We're putting together rental assistance through that task force and a process for students to access that. We had a rental assistance grant program that the three spark points coordinated. We just closed applications, but that was in partnership with Wells Fargo and the United Way and the Catholic charities. So trying to do everything we can to take care of the basic needs of students so that they can continue with us. We've mentioned the food grant program. You saw it in the budget that was approved at the last board meeting. We started with a $1 million investment and we're continuing that this fiscal year. You see the numbers there. We had over 1500 or 1500 individual students since launching in spring. 3,678 different cards originally, physical cards, but now they're electronic cards going out to students. That's how many were done in spring and summer. And we're about to send out cards to 1,200 students right now in the month of September. And you see some folks there to thank Dr. Lauren Ford in my office, Michelle Batista, Nicole and Adolfo. The other two colleges really pulling this together so that students can at least have that basic need supported. But it's also an engagement strategy. It's a support strategy. It's an incentive for students to continue with us because they know they have access to these funds. And so it's important to continue that. And we're glad that we are continuing that through this fiscal year. And then we've mentioned the food distribution. This is just to show you the numbers. CSM has been running since April 3rd. Skyline started two weeks ago, or three weeks ago now on September 2nd. And you see that the number of families that we're serving across the the county. So again, in this COVID time and with all of the pressures that we have, I'm trying to make sure we thank people for for really stepping up to to deliver these services to students. So want to recognize the folks there on the right hand side. In particular, our public safety facilities crews really making these operations happen. And if you haven't seen the pictures, here's some of them. Down there in that lower left hand corner, of course, our brand new president, Dr. Marino, learning that even in the summertime at Skyline, you're going to need that long winter jacket. But that's part of what it means to be at Skyline College. You always got to have your layers. But it really is an all hands on deck experience on Wednesday and Friday and and our facilities crews making sure that we're getting things set up. It's been a, it's been a great effort and it's been a great team work on part of the district. Not to be forgotten, our foundation has been kicking in a lot of emergency scholarships. You see the numbers from from our spring and summer with the emergency fund, support for undocumented students and some of our respiratory students and nursing students. We kicked in an emergency fund for fire relief efforts. You see there, we've had 20 scholarships provided to students and seven awards to faculty and staff who were impacted by the fires that have been raging around us. And we have spring distributions planned as well. So thanks to Kia Warden and her staff for helping to make this happen. Thanks to the directors of financial aid at each of the colleges. Every single time we do a dispersment, we work to get them a list of students. They apply it to the student's financial aid account so it doesn't interfere with any of their other financial aid. It takes a lot of work to process all of those, but they they do it and they make it happen because they know that students need the the financial support right now more than ever. And just as a reminder, CARES Act funds, we've put out so far just over $2.8 million in CARES Act funding went out for our spring dispersment. As we've mentioned, we were required to to give out 50% of our overall CARES award. We dedicated 75%. And we're now distributing the fall distributions, just under 1.4 million out in the fall to complete those awards. And then two of our colleges also reserved minority serving institution CARES Act funds and served another 254 students, as you see there. These are the district wide efforts. It's not all of them. We redesigned all of our websites for students so they had easier access to their their virtual environments. There's been a lot more efforts, but I wanted to really highlight, in my mind, this is what's keeping students engaged in our district, even in this middle of this pandemic. And it's why we saw a small drop, a real drop, but not as big a drop as we would have feared from retention of students from the spring into the fall. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the colleges to to just quickly go through some of their specific efforts. And we're going to start off with Kenyatta College and and Dr. Tammy Robinson, our Vice President of Instruction. So Tammy, take it away.
You got it. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McBean. And it's nice to see you all aboard the trustees. So Kenyatta College has engaged in a massive amount of student engagement work. And I want to thank the, thank our president, Dr. Jamila Moore, and the entire college for just really stepping it up. Part of that also meant that we had to train our faculty when we wouldn't Part of that also meant that we had to train our faculty. When we went to shelter in place, we, it was, it was just very difficult. But we did it, and faculty did it, and I'm so proud of all of them. So all faculty are completing their training in how to engage students in their online environment. Pre-conducted several evaluations, surveys for students so that we could find out directly what their needs were. Technology access, we had over three hundred and nine students borrow equipment such as Chromebooks and calculators and hotspots. We have about a hundred and twenty-five on the waitlist, but I am proud to say tonight that we are now ordering those hotspots for students on the waitlist. We also have a live chat tech support for students via our library site. We've done that before the pandemic, but we're also stepping it up now that we're in this pandemic. We have many new tools and a professional development for faculty and our classified professionals as well. We never forget about them. We have programs such as Pronto, which is a mobile-friendly student engagement platform to help students and get them the information they need quickly. We have brown bags on campus for faculties and tips on how you can increase student engagement. And we also have a company that comes in and a vendor that talks to us about what it means to be a caring campus. And, you know, and so, you know, all of this, we have to reimagine how we connect with our students in this virtual world. We also have online tutoring. We've, we have, you see here that we have over two hundred and fifty-four tutoring sessions that last almost an hour, almost sixty minutes per student, for students. We have also our classes, we have been allowed to run with under twenty students. So thirty-seven percent of our sections at Kenyatta are under twenty students. We also have several short-term certificates. We wanted to add this because what we're doing, we're really stepping up our efforts to really serve our community. We have a cow water program that's funded by California Water, Water Board, where the participants, the classes, the class field, and we did it, and it's in session right now. It's completely sponsored. No, the students did not pay for books. They're not paying for the exams. And, and they are testing to take a treated one and treat it to distribution test where the starting salary is sixty to seventy thousand dollars. We also have a cloud computing course, and we're helping to address the workforce needs for the unemployed in our community, and the unemployed in our community. We're helping to upscale them. Next slide, please. Thank you. We also have peer mentoring. We've stepped up our peer mentoring with two hundred and seventy-six mentees. And, and also we have a guided pathway success teams. And, and this is an effort, again, this is all, a lot of this work we were doing before COVID hit. And now we recognize that we needed to step up our efforts. So our guided pathways teams will be new this year. And we are do, it's a campus-wide effort for us to reach out and do outreach to students, to all of our students. And we're doing this by making sure that everyone is involved in that effort. We have our Dream Center, and we're expanding our, our reach for undocumented student support and aligning with the district work group. We also have a basic needs task force, as, as Dr. McBean was speaking about. Kenyatta College, the administration and many of our volunteers, we're serving over twenty thousand families to date. And our bookstore has become essential now for students in coordinating and mailing out their books and materials and their kits and all the things that they need, their learning materials. We've also updated our learning modalities and drop-in counseling for study groups and mentor panels for our special groups. We are really, again, we have reimagined what student engagement looks like in this virtual world. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as we look at our emergency response, what we see here is we sent out a survey and we, our response, we, a thousand students responded. And those students who responded, they were contacted and called one hundred percent, we contacted one hundred percent of our students. And eighty percent of those students, we provided assistance, one-on-one assistance with our welcome center. Our international students were also contacted and provided one-on-one support, and that is, all of this is ongoing. We also have our CARES Act and our CARES minority-serving institution funding that Dr. McBean has highlighted in his slides. We also have added staffing in order to address the needs of students in the form of an interim dean for enrollment services and support programs, a director for high school transitions and dual enrollment. And that person is responsible for all things that are involving our outreach efforts so that our high school partners know what's available for them at the community college. We've noticed a rise in those students taking classes at the community college as well during the pandemic. We have also a new director for Disability Resource Center and the personal, and personal counseling. And again, that area is also had to, had an uptick in the need for mental health counseling and services for our students. And we also have a college recruiter that's continuing to, the efforts at outreach and helping students. Next slide, please. And I want to thank you all. Kenyatta College is continuing to do town halls, critical conversations. We involve our associated students in all of our programs. But I know that my time is up, and I want to thank you for a few minutes. And again, I think, Kenyatta College with all the faculty, staff, administrators, for all the great work that we've been doing. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Want to turn it over to Dr. Michaela Ochoa from CSM to share some of their specific efforts as well.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. McBean, and good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Claire, members of the Chancellor's Cabinet, Student Trustee and Community. For this next part of our board report, I'll highlight four areas of support where we at CSM have focused to assist students and keep them engaged, involved, and connected in this remote environment. So this first area that we call collaboration with counseling and instructional faculty has been and continues to be a very intentional initiative that began in March immediately after we went remote as a result of COVID. Early on, CSM's Counseling Division proactively asserted that we don't want to lose students as a result of this remote environment. And with that vision and focus, they asked, so what can we do to keep students enrolled, engaged, and involved in this environment? As a result, in March, under the leadership of CSM's Dean of Counseling, the counseling team launched this plan to collaborate with instructional faculty to identify students and/or students who appear to be disengaged. Specifically, instructional faculty were asked to let the counseling team know if they start to see students missing from classroom or missing assignments or appearing to be disengaged, basically to notify them. So faculty were asked to fill out the form which is linked on this slide. So if you click on the link, it takes you to a form. And if faculty see students who appear to be disengaged, they fill out this form. And then that data that goes into the form goes to the counseling department. And then the counseling department reaches out to the students to find out their needs. So for example, if they need to talk to a counselor or somebody in SparkPoint and/or they need other support. And then the counseling team makes that personal connection with the student. They try to find out any concerns to then help identify the resources to support the student. This proactive approach was, it was set up to support students, really trying to keep students engaged in their classes and capture students before they withdraw from their courses. So in spring, faculty submitted sixty-six referrals, as noted on the, on the slide. And in the fall, when we were putting the slide deck together, we had twenty-five students, but now we're up to thirty. So faculty continued to refer students to counseling. And I'd like to thank Crystal Duncan and Christine Sue and the entire counseling team and faculty for their teamwork and supporting students. Next slide, please. So the second area of engagement has been via student surveys and various public forums, as noted on this slide. Immediately after we went remote, our college campus pre-offices worked in collaboration on the Transition to Distance Education Survey that went out to students. We were able to use data from that survey to help inform recommendations and decisions we have made and implemented, including, for example, parking lot Wi-Fi and financial and human resources assignments that we've made, for example. In addition, over the past six months, we've hosted about seven forums where Cabinet has actively participated to listen to student updates, concerns, and any questions on a variety of topics, including student technology needs, summer session, withdrawals, refunds, financial aid, access to food, things such as personal counseling, academic, academic counseling, grading, tutoring, telemedicine. Following these forums, we have dedicated time during our cabinet meetings to discuss and decide on action plans related to feedback we learned from students. For example, from the first student forum, Cabinet collected and discussed, and we're actually now addressing, nineteen requests that came in from students. And thank you, students, for your rich feedback to help guide and inform our recommendations and decisions. Next slide, please. The third area we wanted to share is technology hardware support to students. As you know, and we've talked about reliable Wi-Fi access is critical for our students. As noted on this slide, hotspots are a hot item. We've heard this in our forums and many venues when we meet with students. The hotspot data provided on this slide is reflective of one of the reasons we recommended the district-wide implementation of parking lot Wi-Fi. This data is of September fourteen. And so the requests associated, and there are four requests that are associated with fall 2020, exclusively for fall 2020. We are expecting, as Dr. McBean mentioned, we are expecting a hundred hotspots anytime this week, which will immediately be distributed to students and will eliminate the current hotspot waitlist of seventy-four. And then within the next week, we expect to deliver on two hundred and forty-three of the two hundred and forty-five requests. In terms of the webcam that you see on the slide, Chromebooks do provide webcams and ITS is also helping us build the two, as noted on the slide. So thanks again to our ITS team and our library staff for all of your support. And final slide, next slide, please. Thank you. So finally, the fourth area we wanted to share involves instructional support for students. In this area, faculty have worked directly with students and/or their deans to provide these additional instructional support items, as noted on this final slide, in the areas of art, digital media, music, electronics, cosmetology, and biology. And finally, I'd just like to thank our faculty and deans for your support in this area. And this concludes our report from CSM. Any questions? Or Aaron, should we take, oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. And we're going to wrap up with Dr. Taylor Mendoza from Skyline and of course, open it up to any questions that the board may have. So, Dr. Taylor Mendoza.
Thank you so much, Aaron. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor's Cabinet, Chancellor's Claire, Chancellor Claire, Student Trustee and District Community. Excited to talk to you about some of the support services and revamping of programs that we've done for Skyline College. Let me start off by saying that we really looked at it in a sense of a three-pronged approach. And so the first really is reaffirming our values and the college mission. And so regardless of power outages, pandemic, orange skies, you know, hailstorms, and any other things that we might consider, it's important to know and for the students to know that we're going to stay true to the missions, our mission, and we're going to make sure that their education and that student support is front and centered. The second thing is that we realize that it is going to take leadership at all levels. So classified professionals, faculty, administration, student leadership. And so as we're, as you, as you hear me tonight and I'm speaking to programs that we want to highlight, it's important to know that everyone has been involved. It has been a tribe approach and an effort to really make sure that the core of what we do is to support the students and of course, our communities. Another thing that is really, I think, really special and unique to Skyline is the connection to community, both domestic and internationally, and also the connection to each other. I love Dean Visner when she talks about concierge services, and I feel that we have really done that. With all of our special populations, we've been able to provide really personal attention, mentoring, and really strong connections. And so what we have, it was really challenging because we had, we did a call-out to all of the activities that were occurring. There was just a host of activities, and probably similar to my colleagues at CSM and Kenyatta. And which ones do we want to highlight? So you have activities here on the, the slides, but I'm going to highlight a few. And before I start, I want to also really thank the deans. Having been a director and the dean in this district, I understand what it really takes to work with faculty and classified professionals to get these services going. And I want to acknowledge their work and their efforts. So a couple of things I want to highlight in counseling. One is health services. Under the leadership of Michelle Batista and Luis Escobar, it's really exciting to see all of the monthly webinars that have gone out and that have been presented in regards to COVID-19. It's allowed a wonderful space for the campus community to connect and really address fears that folks might have or questions in regards to just how to proceed in their own life and then, of course, just and how to engage in this just new environment. So that's been super helpful. Another thing that has been great is this, is that we are still continuing to really connect with the community. And so the how to register, helping our community become registered voters, voters has been a partnership with counseling, librarians, and also the Peninsula People Power. And so that's been a perfect, beautiful kind of partnership because as we're dealing with the pandemic and wanting to ensure that we have services for students, we also have an election coming. And so we're also trying to serve the community. So that's something that I think is really important to what we're doing. Another thing for enrollment service under the leadership of Will Minnick has really been the work that we've done with our veterans. And then Gina, of course, our veterans and military, by really reaching out and having newsletters to ensure that veterans are connected to the services that they need to be successful and connected to social workers as well. And so that's been a great, great sort of pathway and avenue. How do we begin to really honor those who have served our country so well? And they've done a really great job. Under student equity and support programs, under Cheryl Johnson's, it's been really exciting. As you know, Student Equity and Support Program serves EOPNS, TRIO, Brothers Achieving Milestones, and other special populations that really service students of color. And what I really love about the approach that student equity has taken is just that personal touch. You know, I look over one thousand outreach phone calls and emails in the summer, right? That's some intentional work to really identify students who are maybe haven't registered or maybe have fallen off. And so I really appreciate all of the work that they've really done to really connect intentionally to the populations that need it the most, right? Because this is what it's about. How do we get services and how do we revamp programs for the populations that need it the most? Next slide. Some of the things that have happened on the instructional side has been something that I'm super excited about. Our ECE and early education, you know, program and staff have continued to reach out to the families that they serve, which is super exciting. They send newsletters. They give advice. They even talk about how do you begin to help your student at home. And so once again, that personal connection and, and just reminding the community that we might not be on campus, but we got you, right? We got your back. We understand you have needs, and we're going to continue that communication. On online support, Bayak has been amazing. They received a one hundred thousand dollar grant to provide support to small businesses. And they have served and reached out to over thirty-two hundred clients and contacts as we're in this pandemic on really discussing how do we help support you, how do we get you working, and how do we move forward? So I'm excited about that. As we talk about athletics, it's, it's perfect, right? And I'm so excited under the leadership of Joe Morello that he has been really working with the coaches and also the directors to stay connected to students, right? So we're not there. We're not on campus, but how do we continue to be connected to athletics and how do we continue that training? So it's been wonderful. One of the things that I smile about, I'm happy. One of the things that I smile about, having a seventeen-year-old who's taking engineering, she received her engineering kit at home, and I was like, you know, a child at Christmas trying to go through it and see what was in there. But, you know, the realization was how important these kits are. And so as you see, we've done an amazing job giving out kits, whether it's biotech twelve-hundred kits or you have the STEM Center giving out eight-hundred thirty. I had a conversation with Dean Grandi and Dean Carla Grandi, and she was telling me that there's a, let me get it right, a fetal dissection pit kit, you know, that came in there. And I'm thinking to myself, that's interesting. I know, Aaron, it's interesting, but, but it's also exciting in a sense because that's part of the curriculum. And how exciting is that we're able to still provide that support and have the students pick that up? And so just tons of, tons of, and we've also were able to do this, of course, in performing arts and music as well. And then lastly, I want to talk about just the importance of our international students. Whether we have students who have left to go to their country and are maybe feeling isolated, or students who are here domestically, it's really important that we continue. And I was really excited to see how many hours went into really making sure that we're meeting the needs. As you know, Skyline's mission is to empower and transform a global community of learners. And so I'm so excited that even during this time, under this leadership that we have in our nation, that this district is still supporting and doing what needs to do for international students because they have the right. So I'm excited to be a part of this team, especially under the leadership of Dr. Melissa Moreno, who is just awesome. And so that concludes my report, and I want to give it back to Aaron.
Thanks, Dr. Taylor Mendoza. So I just want to wrap up and I'll turn it over to the board for questions. We wanted to share a lot of information, just so that you can see all the efforts that we've been undertaking across the district, across the three colleges, to really manage this remote and online environment. As we were talking this morning with our VPs, we've had to reimagine everything that we do all the time to fit to this operating environment. It's not perfect, but it's getting better, and we're learning from it. And every time we find a new area where there's a need, we come together as a district and we try to work to meet it. And we're committed to continuing to do that all the way through this fall semester and with your support, continuing through the spring. Because the reality is, you know, we hit two hundred thousand deaths in the U.S. just this week due to the COVID-19 coronavirus. And until there is a vaccine, this is going to be, it's going to be a rough haul, but we're in it together. We're in it with our students, and we're committed to being here for our communities. And I hope you see that through all this work. So I just thank everyone for all of those efforts. Just really quickly, we continue to evolve the services that we provide based on what is going on in the state and in the county. One of those areas is athletics. We were in the purple situation up until this Tuesday, the most restrictive level. But we have been working with our athletic directors, we've been working with the coaches and athletic trainers in order to put in place what's required in order to return athletic conditioning. They released that interim guidance for athletics a few months ago in the higher-end guidance. It spells a very specific criteria that higher education has to meet because we're not K-12. The higher education has to meet in order to return athletic conditioning. One of those criteria is to have regular testing of athletes. And right now, that's the biggest, the biggest crux that we're trying to overcome is to identify reliable, regular testing. But in the meantime, we've had the athletic directors working with all of our E O C branches in order to prepare our sites. So we put down the signage, we have marked off locker rooms, we are preparing traffic flow maps for all of our sites. We've made sure that we have the sanitation supplies. Each of the athletic directors have drafted what they have to call the Return to Play Plan. Each, each site has to have an individualized Return to Play Plan. We've drafted those based on the N C double A rules, and they're under review by our Health Branch Director and our E F C Director currently. What we agreed to is, in the purple situation, we were status quo, essential infrastructure courses. Once we're in the red, what we're requiring is that we are in the red tier of the state for a minimum of two weeks with our metrics trending in the right direction, either holding stable or moving towards the orange. And after that two-week period, which means two weeks from tomorrow, if we meet all the other criteria that we have to, including the testing, then we will return athletic conditioning. And we have to do it equitably across all of our sports, both men's and women's. But that's what we're aiming towards, is a two-week return if we can meet all of those criteria. It might be a three-week return. If we identify the testing, and it takes a little bit more time, but that's, that's the crux right now. It will be outdoor as well to begin with, just because of where we find ourselves. And as we move forward, as hopefully our metrics improve as a county, we'll continue to investigate what we are able to do and what we can handle in order to support all of our students, including our student athletes. And so I want to make sure the board knows that. I'm happy to provide you with the memo that we circulated that was helped, the athletic directors helped draft that specify these different criteria for us, and we'll bring regular updates as we move forward this fall. So thank you and happy to take questions from the board.
Trustee Goodman has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Aaron, for that great report and to the faculty, staff, and all the campus in the district. Thank you so much. We do see it. We do see the work. We do see the responsive nature that you're handling everything and, and just the tremendous focus on our students. So thank you so much. To the question regarding the sports, just quickly, do we see that, you know, any challenges for those sports as they begin to ramp up? That they have to play catch-up with regards to ensuring that they have the proper equipment for the coming year or this year that we're in, that they will have to, with regards to purchasing or anything like that? Do we see any challenges there for any of our fall sports or winter sports?
I haven't heard any. You know, we were, we've been preparing for the eventual return of athletics. As you probably know, the Triple C double A that we're, is our Athletic Association have laid out the timelines, and so folks have been preparing for that, at least for the athletic side. For the, the supply side, the logistics side, for handling what's required for sanitization, for masks, all that kind of stuff, we have, we have everything we need as a district to support the return, absolutely. And we've got our Logistics Branch folks, including Yanelli Polito, who's been working with us to ensure we have on hand all the supplies that we need. Yes, absolutely.
And then I guess towards the question that we have before us with regards to opening up, obviously, we, we want to make sure that we're looking at data, we're looking at science as we, we move forward. But to some of the concerns around not just the students, but our faculty's social emotional state and making sure that we're addressing those needs, if at any time possible, are we looking at possibly opening up the campuses at a very limited level to allow either individuals that are, I don't want to use a word, that are, what do you call it, cabin fever at home, because it's not cabin fever, it's just the fact that they have the lack of resources and space, just like our students do, to give them some space at the campus to allow us to kind of do a dress rehearsal, to prepare for opening, you know, when we do, you know, get ready to open and be back to our traditional delivery of our educations to our students. Have we explored any ways that we can do that, whether it's at a limited level, using both athletics as well as some of our staff and faculty to be able to come on site at a limited level? Obviously, if only if they're willing to and, you know, keeping in line with the testing and everything. But that where we're providing a sense of a dress rehearsal, so we're not just overwhelming the system when we do open up?
Yeah, I, well, go ahead, Aaron. Go, you've been, no, no, great question. Matter of fact, I changed my background just so those can see, you know, the signage that we're already set with, you know, across our campuses. So, great question, Trustee Goodman. And yes, I think we're going to need to pace this as, as best we can in accordance with when it's safe to do so. And I, and, you know, I jumped in on Aaron, and he probably should have answered because he's much more in the weeds on this. But we've, we've got folks in our E O C that are looking at this. We got Ray Hernandez, our Health Director. So we definitely want to, you know, I had hoped way back when, we'd be kind of on a split shift even in summer, you know, like a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, and obviously that didn't happen. So I think we're going to continue to watch this, recognizing that people are wanting to, you know, some people are wanting to get out and, you know, have a new environment. We've just got to pace it. I'm a little bit worried about the flu season and, and, you know, everything I'm reading is we're going to get another spike. So I think it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when, a long-winded answer, but we're with you, we understand. Aaron, I'm sorry, I jumped in, probably should have let you answer because you probably have better information than me.
It's right in line with Chancellor Claire. So a few of the things, just to provide you some perspective too. So every time we finish one major operation, whether it's, you know, moving to the Wi-Fi access, preparing for athletics, we're looking ahead at, okay, so what's the next thing? What's the next thing? What's the next thing? What can we bring on and still keep our campuses safe, our faculty and our staff safe, our students safe, and be responsive to the rules? And so the next thing that we're looking at is definitely, when we move into the orange and we're allowed fifty percent capacity in some spaces, what are the services that might be able to return, for example, additional Wi-Fi access, but it's going to be winter? So maybe we need to have that available inside. Maybe that's in our large space learning centers because there's lots of airflow. There's lots of space that you can spread people out, minimum six, probably ten feet. And so we're definitely looking at what is the, you know, what's the next evolution of providing more and more access? With the struggle of maintaining the contract tracing, maintaining the access protocols and keeping things controlled in that environment so that we're not having to then all of a sudden shut down. Regardless of the timeline for when we can finally open, so there's a couple of things. One thing I like to remind folks, everybody watching, is regardless of what color we're in as a county, the guidance is if it can be remote, it should stay remote. And so we're really taking that seriously. However, within that, we are looking at what we can bring back. And so Manuel, Dr. Perez down at Kenyatta, has been leading our Student Services Branch, working with Michelle Rudowski's team, who's been amazing, and doing space assessments of every single student services areas to say, okay, what do we need for plexiglass in order to prepare the space? What, you know, the signage is there in most spaces now, but what would we need in each of these areas? How many students or could it handle if we're just doing students? How many staff could be there potentially? And so they're regularly doing those space assessments, including, you know, H V A C assessments because airflow is such a big issue with this particular virus. Some spaces, we can't, we would never be able to open just because the H V A C and the air in the room and the space wouldn't allow it. But we're definitely doing those assessments. We're actively working on them. So as soon as we move into the orange, the question is, what's next? What next are we going to do in order to be able to provide more supports?
And then lastly, just, I commend you and the, and the rest of the district on the work that we're doing for addressing anxiety around the work, you know, the impacts of the pandemic on our students. But as we move to possibly, until we come to a vote tonight, you know, until we make that decision, you know, obviously, there's going to be some anxiety around employees, whether they feel that, oh, I have to go back to work because if not, then I'm going to, I feel like I'm not doing anything. Or my manager might look at me differently or anything like that. Is there anything that we're doing or could be done, even if it's a sign of commitment from this board that would send a strong message that, that we hear them and that we understand that the anxiety will be there? But for any permanent employees that we will not be, you know, their jobs will not be affected by, by the, the impact of this vote?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to, this one I am going to jump in on, and, and thank you, Trustee Goodman, absolutely. I think, I think I messaged that way back in March that I, and I've said it publicly, so. Yeah, so if the board would like to make a comment, but I feel very strongly that I do not, in fact, there's a, there is a, someone typed in the Q and A that very concern. I, as Chancellor, never want someone to feel like they have to come into work if they're uncomfortable. And, and if their job is dependent on being on site, we will work with their bargaining unit to find alternative work. I, I, I just, I feel very, even, I've said this, even in my own household, there's differing levels of comfort. And I acknowledge that if the board would like to make a statement, I think that would be great. I think that even speaks more to the employees than, you know, emails from me or, you know, a statement on opening day, so.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Randall Kern.
Yeah, thank you, President Schwartz. Huge thanks and much gratitude to everyone and, you know, faculty, staff, and all of our employees and all of our students for their, you know, flexibility and understanding. This has been a tremendous report, and I really am so impressed with all the efforts that are being put into trying to continue to execute on our mission of providing quality education to our students in what are clearly, you know, very difficult circumstances to try and pull it off in. So hats off to everyone and well done and the great report. I'd like to just point out a few things as we, as we go forward with this decision and what we're doing about spring. The first is, I appreciate all the efforts that we've put into trying to, you know, expand and open up and provide student services as rapidly as we can, given what color level we're in this week or next week or in two weeks. And I would also just like to remind folks that while the technology is an important piece, it's not the only piece of what we're doing and providing the, you know, I'm really glad to hear a lot of this was mentioned already in the reports, but, you know, the peer-to-peer mentoring, the counseling services, you know, all the other support services that we provide that have to be done hands-on. It's all so important to our student success, and we've heard it mentioned a couple of times by different people tonight, just the fact that, you know, our students are under increasingly difficult situations at home to try and find a quiet place to study, a quiet place to take an exam or do an online class, and maybe even some of our faculty have the same situation. If they're juggling, you know, working spouses and a couple of kids that are trying to get educated at home as well, trying to teach a class in the middle of all that chaos is, you know, hard to understand how it all happens, but somehow we managed to pull it off. But that also means that if we can start providing some of those quiet spaces on campus where students can come in and use a learning lab, where students can come in and get face-to-face counseling instead of trying to do it online, where they can take a class in a quiet area, all that's really important, especially as we move into the winter season where, I just look at this in my own life, you know, the times that we're willing to spend standing outside, waiting to get into the grocery store. I'm willing to do that right now. If it's raining and forty degrees outside, I may be a lot less willing to, to put up with some of this stuff. So I think we're going to have to think about how we rethink what we're doing as the weather changes. And sadly, I think it is likely that we're going to see a second spike and a second wave of COVID coming along, along with the flu. So it's going to be kind of a double whammy coming up this, this winter as well. So I just, it's going to be a tough situation that's going to be very fluid, and will probably get worse before it gets better. So I would just encourage everybody to try not to get too exhausted by this, to hang in there, keep doing what we're doing. And again, try and keep the focus on, as much as we can do to try and return some sense of those relatively normal face-to-face services that we can provide to our students, to keep that going as well. I think it's going to be very, very important. I recognize the need that, you know, we have to make decisions early, maybe earlier than we would like in an ideal world, about what's going on in spring. And I just hope we can maintain as much flexibility as possible. So should we get pleasantly surprised with, you know, a vaccine, for example, or, you know, good news about caseloads dropping in terms of the outbreaks locally and so forth, that we can try and accelerate the return to face-to-face presence on campus and instruction on campus just as quickly as we can, even though we may have set down a different path at the beginning of the semester. That would just be my comments. And again, thanks, thanks to everyone for the great work so far. And it's been a hell of a six months since we had to do this pivot in the middle of March. And I recognize how difficult it's been, and I am extremely appreciative of how well we have all managed to pull this off under very difficult circumstances. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members? We haven't heard from our student trustee. Jade, are you out there? Would you like to comment on a student's perspective? I can't tell with the thing on the screen if she's there. Maybe not. It's okay.
Jade, I think she was muted. I think she's here. I see her, but. I think she's here, I see her, but I think she's muted. Here she is, she's plugging in now. Yeah, there we go, I see it. Good.
Thanks. Okay, Jade, we'd like to hear from you. I'm not getting it.
Still muted, Jade.
Here we go, yes.
Okay, I'm really grateful to see the different presentations on the different schools because it really shows how each campus is trying to stay connected to our students, especially if it's looking like we're going to be remote next semester. I think connectedness is definitely one thing that from the student's perspective that we're going to be worried about. But I think if it's the safer choice for us, then I think remote is definitely it. But I do want to say thank you for the presentation.
Great, and thank you, Jade, for getting connected. Before, I'd say, does anybody else from the public? If anybody raises a hand, somebody's going to have to let me know. I don't see the scrolling. If not, we have a motion on the floor. My question is, do we want to add to our motion to make some kind of a statement, a board commitment to safety for for all, encompasses everything? Nobody's responding, so we should keep the motion as is.
I'm just, well, can you, what, what, what do you have in mind?
Well, we were talking about making some kind of a commitment to make a statement of commitment that we are opening up the classes, but always with safety in mind for all of our employees and students, just making a commitment. I wonder if we wanted to add it to this motion right now, since we have that vote on the floor?
Maybe we can get worse and miss something and put it together. It might have, you know, probably at the next board meeting. I don't know if between the president and Mike, if you guys could, if you all could put something together.
Okay, we'll come back with something then next, the next meeting. I think that is important because it's always the over, it's always the answer as to why we're not doing things because we're taking into consideration of the safety of everybody. So maybe.
Yeah, and I think speaking to, you know, making sure that we are not just committed to their health and wellbeing, but, you know, trying to keep any anxiety in that we're, that no one's going to be negatively impacted, hopefully. I mean, hopefully, some some words that we could speak, some confidence and commitment to our employees that they're not negatively impacted by the work that we're approving tonight.
Okay, very good. We'll come back with that on the next one, thank you. So we do have our motion and our second on the floor. So now I'll call for the vote on the chancellor's recommendation to hold all classes, services and operations with limited exceptions online or remotely for a spring of 2021 semester. I'm ready to call the vote, all in favor, aye, aye? Motion passes unanimously, very good. Okay, information report 20-96C, a discussion of the interest in endorsing Proposition 15. Board of trustees routinely considers publicly endorsing ballot measures. On the fall 2020 ballot will be Proposition 15, which increases funding sources for public schools, community colleges and local government services by changing tax assessment of commercial and industrial property. I now open this up for discussion, see if we want to endorse this measure. Board members, anybody want to comment?
Sure, why not? I'm strongly in favor of this proposition of this measure. I think the, it's a matter of fairness, both to the governmental agencies that have been starved from property taxes due to this, for the educational system in particular, that will benefit hugely from whether it's K through 12 or community colleges. Frankly, from a business competitive standpoint, when you look at the the differential impact of sort of old businesses versus new businesses in California, it's a really unfair advantage that that old businesses have because they have a much lower property tax base. So there's just a number of reasons why this is the right thing to do and makes a ton of sense to do. And, you know, it, I believe the number that we will individually benefit from as a district is in the millions of dollars of additional revenue that we would get if this passed. So I don't, honestly, don't see any reason why we would not want to be in support of this as a district. So I would be wholeheartedly in favor of a resolution to that effect.
Thank you. Other board members? Trustee Oliver, I think you wanted to comment.
I agree with everything trustee Manuel Kern said. This does impact our own community college district, the whole public education system, social services that students and members of the community rely on. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Vice President Norris?
Yes, any measure that will bring more funds to education is something that I would support and which I have for decades. And so I'm very pleased that this has come on. I hope our community will support it as well.
Yeah.
And trustee Goodman?
Yeah, no, hopefully, I know we anticipate bringing upwards of a million plus dollars to us and I really appreciate it. I think supporting this is supporting not just our students at the college level, but also from the KP12 level as well and in the municipalities that our district or campuses are in. So I strongly support that.
Very good. And I also support this, I think it's long overdue. I'm happy that it's coming forward. We can bring this back at our next meeting in a resolution form. I think we have several examples to choose from and we always have our vice chancellor, Mitch Bailey, who's very creative of writing resolutions. So we will bring it back for the next meeting for approval, if that's agreeable to the board. Okay. I don't see anybody from public, so we'll go to the communications. Anybody, I don't have anything. We'll go down to statements from board members. Are there any statements from any board members? But he's been busy working out of the things.
No, I have a statement I'd like to.
Where are you? Okay, trustee Goodman, go ahead.
You know, today we had a tremendous, what I believe is a tremendous miscarriage of justice. Breonna Taylor, 26 year old woman. She was fatally shot by Louisville Metro Police Officers. And today, those officers were not held responsible for her death. Instead, one officer was held responsible or he was charged with doing damage to property. I don't know how how much more we can take as a community, as a people. But this is why we say Black Lives Matter. Black women matter. We have to do more. I know I'm preaching to the choir as I, as I speak tonight. I know that we get it. I know that we understand that we have to continue the work that our chancellor and that our district has committed to of being anti racist. We have to continue to educate and graduate anti racist students that will go out and be not just voters, but the prosecutors, police officers, community members that are well informed. But we also have to understand that this is why local elections and local voting matters. Because when you say that under law, they did nothing wrong, then that means the law needs to change. That needs, that means that we have to deconstruct the very system that we are living within and living under. I'm just in in shock. I know there are so many people that I, as I look out into this Zoom, I know you all get it. And it's, it just, just doesn't, doesn't make sense. But how do we tell our students, how do we tell our children that they matter? If every other day we see something like this? So we can do better, we have to do better. Just vote and and just keep hope alive and just, just keep pushing on. Because I know for a fact, nothing will change if we do nothing. But if we do something, at least we have a chance. So that's my comment.
Yeah, I want to take the time to say, answer your question. I, I don't get it at all. You say we understand, I don't get it. It makes no sense to me, absolutely no sense. And I think the only hope that I see is people are united. And that's my own, it's my own personal editorial now. But I feel people are united and their voting is the answer. And people, I've always said, I owe my personal opinion again, it's local, you can make a difference. The higher up you go, the more it gets away from you. But these things are just, it's just intolerable in a sense. And I'm personally just absolutely tired of it, but we have to keep moving forward. And, yeah, I don't know. It's hard to talk about because it's just, it's crazy, just absolutely nuts in a nutshell. But anyway. Any other comments, trustee Norris?
You know, on the screen next to me where it says Black Lives Matter in yellow, before that switch, I noticed that there was a picture, I believe that Jim had James Baldwin up there, a picture of him, the novelist and, and, yes, he did have Jim.
Yeah.
And it reminded me of, I mean, just because of all the material that there is, all of the material that has been, you know, been circulating now, trying to raise a consciousness and awareness. I watched a video on YouTube of James Baldwin debating William F. Buckley in 1965 at Cambridge University about the subject of Negroes in America, that's, that's how it was termed. And the things that he said in 1965 are exactly the things that we are hearing today. 55 years later, and you know what? They're the same things that probably were said, you know, 100 years before then. Some things just have not changed. And, you know, when you get that reality check, when you hear something from that far back and it sounds like it's being said to you today, then that even amplifies even more the fact that we haven't really moved and now things are moving and the momentum has to just keep going. And what do they say, you know, if not us, then who? If not when, if now, then when? And now you got to do it. You got to make the changes that are necessary. Voting is very, very critical, very.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. What do we have on the chart here? Right there. Okay, he's telling me to rush it along. Okay, I think that, thank you for bringing that up to keep us aware and keep us, everybody's eyes wide open. And I think we will adjourn, the board has to go back to closed session. And we will meet again by Zoom on October 14th. But for now, board members, go back to your original check in. It was sent to you by the chancellor. And we'll see you, we'll see you soon. Bye now.